Always did and the way that was done before me with this. And then hopefully, if we finish up tonight, use that gavel to adjourn. First item on the agenda, oh, those who wish to watch or participate remotely. They do so by accessing the meeting link at www.selfroertown.com/remote meetings. So the first item on the agenda is a discussion item. It's the master plan committee update. Mrs. Luttrell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I don't remember how to do this. Do you have to push anything? Yeah, because I don't think the microphones are on.
It's all owl.
Oh, is it all, oh, so you need these things? I don't think so.
We're not on Sam.
No.
Or owl.
We've got that part.
Yeah, see what happened?
So we pick up a lot of sound with you folks. I think I can do that. You can. Um, the master plan, the final draft review was presented to town meeting. There is a QR code that is all around town. But, um, or you can access the master plan via the town website on the master plan committee webpage. In the next couple of weeks, we'll be incorporating all the gorgeous pictures that we received. We weren't able to get them in prior to town meeting, but those will be incorporated. And the plan is to have a joint planning board select board meeting in June, at which time hopefully the planning board will accept the plan. And the master plan committee will be done. We're meeting on Wednesday to recap town meeting and figure out the next steps forward. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the master plan committee update?
It was great jogging and time for town meeting and getting it out there. Thank you, maybe.
Is there, uh, can anyone from the public tune in to this thing?
Yes.
So should I?
If you see what's behind you, that's what's going out on YouTube.
Okay, so every time we have any questions or comments, I should ask if the public has any questions or comments? And then you would.
I have people on Zoom, yes.
And then you would let them speak?
Yes.
Okay, so do you see anybody that has any questions or comments?
No, only you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. So continue public hearing through 25 Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods Expansion. Major site plan approval, this is continued from September 27th, October 18th, November 15th, December 13th, January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, February 28th, March 14th, April 11th, and April 25th. And the also continued public hearing for Ken's Foods Expansion Special Permit for Low Impact Development, continued from the same date. Karina, did you want to give us an update on this?
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it really can.
Okay, um, so at the last meeting, 25th, just prior to that, we received Fussin' O'Neill review comments on submission number four. Four, that was the applicant team's most recent submission. On April 29th, Scott Doty with J. Crowe submitted planting clarifications and bio retention area information and asked me to submit that to Mimi Luttrell for review in response to some questions on the plantings from the last planning board meeting. On May 5th, we received an email from attorney Bill Pizzoni from the applicant team, submitting a letter to the planning board with a history summary of the major site plan approval aspects. The next day, we received an email from Scott Doty. One of the comments in the Fussin' O'Neill review letter, number 34, had referenced some minor discrepancies in some of the, some of the notes, some of the, the, the callouts on the plans. So I asked Scott Doty to follow up with Fussin' O'Neill to clarify on what those discrepancies were because Fussin' O'Neill felt that they weren't impacting to the project at this point, but we needed to know what they were. So Scott provided a response to that, that they were very minor typos based on rounding up of numbers from three decimal points to two decimal points. We also received a letter from Open Space Preservation Commission Chair Freddie Gillespie, outlining that they had corresponded, the applicant team had corresponded with Open Space and were, um, had many areas in agreement and there were a couple new recommendations. Scott Doty responded in email to that comment letter. This morning, we, we received an email from Heather Elkier, Board of Health Director, with comments regarding, I think a statement that Bill Pizzoni had included in his letter memo with the summary history of the major site plan approval and some comments. That was forwarded to the planning board and also to the applicant team so that they could be aware of that. Then this afternoon, we also received an update from the Board of Health Chair Chelsea McNal- Malnowski on the noise concerns as well. And then lastly, earlier this afternoon, we received an email from Debbie DiMoria, resident at 58 Flag Road, requesting for a condition to nighttime use of the loading bays, requesting a condition in that regard. And that pretty much brings us up to date. Just double checking here. Yep, and that, that brings us to this evening.
Very good, thank you. Um, who's gonna go first, Bill? Feel free to, uh, you know, come up to the.
I was gonna ask, where do you, where do you want us to the owl polls?
We're all out of practice.
Yeah, come on up to the table, let's see how that works.
Get our names in here.
Good evening and welcome back. Good evening and thank you. And before we do, Scott, I would like to say something gone, Mr. Morris, Chairman. I've been around most of the 40 years that you've been sitting up there and it's been a pleasure and a lot of fun. We didn't always agree, but we always seem to be able to work out a resolution for the developers that I represented. It was good for the community, so I applaud you on your 40 ideas of being here and I enjoyed it, I enjoyed the time.
Thank, thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
I agree, we had, we had good success, great success.
Yeah.
I don't think there, other than what's going on restaurant, there was a single other building between the fable lights and, uh, it'll love. And of course, all those office buildings, we'd be part of that.
Yeah.
We also had some fun.
Pretty much from 495 to Oak Street, actually all the way to Framingham because there were a couple before you on that too.
Yeah.
But, uh, and.
And now we're on the other side of Route 9.
In the subdivision still.
Right.
Yeah. No, it's, it was good and you were always a gentleman and I appreciate it. I guess I'd prefer to let Scott start with anything that, any engineering issues that remain, remain open, open space concerns that we just heard about today and then see if there are any questions from the board or anybody else relative to the engineering. And then we can move on to the noise issue and where we are with that.
Um, Scott, before you.
Yes.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
Before we get into that, I'll ask the board. I went through all, all of that Fussin' O'Neill stuff, your, your responses back and forth. Does the board want to have Mr. Doty go through it line by line and then detail by detail? Or by exception? Or like a top, top view of it? How would you like, like him to proceed?
At this point, I think it's about the waiver requests based on the back and Fussin' O'Neill, but the rest of the project is not including the landscaping, open space and butter concerns about noise as far as, as Mr. Pizzoni and Mr. Doty, which passing the engineering.
Is that the way you wanted to do it?
Well, uh, yes, and I suppose we're back to this hybrid meeting and perhaps, I don't know if Karina or Colleen can put the, our document that has the list of, of, uh, waivers up, thank you, Bill. But also before, while, while that's being located, I wanted to ask and see if the information they had provided regarding the planting clarifications on what's going on, the bio retention area was sufficient and whether or not you had a chance to review it and whether or not it was sufficient. Mrs. Luttrell, that's, uh, I know it was, uh, questions that you had responded.
So the, so the, the plant, the plan from 2019 had landscaping requirements, which weren't complied with.
That's correct, they didn't, they didn't all survive and there was some herbaceous plants I don't think were ever planted.
Right.
Yeah.
So the new plans don't show those?
Yes, they do, new plans do show them in, in placements and in excess, actually, of the.
So from what I see, there are some, but none, like by the snow storage area, there were a whole bunch of winter berries and a service berry and a whole bunch of plants that aren't showing on these plants.
The, um, service berries that one did not survive and we didn't propose to replace that specific plant. But instead, our wetland biologist included other more suitable plants for the elevations and the wet soils that are there. And so that's what we've done is that some, the plants that were not successful were replaced by plants that, that in their opinion are going to be more successful. But overall, the plant materials, actually the planting is going to be more robust than, the planting is more robust. And I was, that's what I wanted to communicate in the summary that I put together for you, that, um, that we're proposing more plants than had originally and compatible with the conditions out there and compatible with the original plan.
Are those on the plan?
Yes, they are, yeah, they're on the plan.
The 329 plan?
The latest set of plans, there's a, there's a plant, there's a planting plan.
I can see a couple of blocks, but I don't see, I don't see all of this that we saw.
Would be in the latest plans and I can see that Karina's calling it up right now. That's one folder where Colleen now is, who's operating that. The latest set of plans, yes. You might not have the latest plan, I don't know.
C5, Colleen? It's the 30th.
Yeah, the April 19th plans, yeah. C5, and then you gotta go, you gotta move, move ahead to the, there's, if you could go ahead and on these plans here, there is the detailed plantings for the bio retention area, uh, new plans that were added. When it also shows the, the plantings in the, in the buffer zone. They're not this plan, it's the, you gotta go, you gotta move up into the set. The supplemental planting plans are ready. Yes, there you go, C6, Mia.
Scott, the C5 plan that you provided and the supplemental information for Mimi Luttrell, that's dated, I believe it's dated February 2022. Is that the correct version?
No, the correct version are the latest plans that we.
Right, this came in after the latest plans. What you provided was, this, the supplement that you provided was submitted after your most recent plans.
So these plans weren't circulated?
Everything was circulated, but the, the plan that you provided needed forward to Mimi Luttrell, C5, right? That plan happened to be dated February 2nd, just trying to see it here. February 2nd, 2022 is the most recent revision date. Is that different than the C5 in the current set of plans?
The latest planting plan for the bio retention is C6.
Right, but I'm saying the C5 plan that you submitted in your submission, right? The plan set that you submitted, there's a C5, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Right, and then you provided Mimi Luttrell a excerpt sheet C5 and I was just curious if that excerpt matches the same date as the most current plan. Because what I'm reading on C5 planting plan in the excerpt that you provided to answer Mimi's questions from the last meeting, the revision date is February 2022.
Well, that was the last revision to that specific plan. But the plan, theme plan for the, um, bio retention area and the, what has, which has changed, what we proposed to change on this plan is that plant list because there was some concern about two, I think maybe two of the species not being purely native. Thanks. And so I think it may have to do with hybrids and perhaps cultivars. And so we eliminated that possibility by making sure. So that is the excerpt that I've included, what is on the planting list on this plan, C5, but the plants for the bio retention area are on the C6 plant.
I understand, but are the C5s both the same? Is plan sheet C5 that we provided Mimi separately the same as the C5 in the current set?
The, we, it, it should be this, it's the same, it's the same plan, but we proposed to make that change to the plant list that I, that I had in the excerpt of it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that Mimi is looking at.
Yeah, I think that's.
The planning board is looking at the same C5.
It's the right C5, but what we're proposing is to change those two cultivars. And that was part of the.
Which is not yet included, which is not yet included in a final set.
That is correct. I wanted to make sure that was okay so that we could finalize that.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Karina.
So here's to just standing there. So this planting in the bio retention, that's, um, some part, it's a part of the issue, right?
It, the, all of the, by, the entire bio retention area was, was a requirement to meet for stormwater quality for that, for the northeast parking lot under stormwater management guidelines to, for clean, because it, for cleaning the stormwater from runoff from the parking lot. So that, that's the intent of that whole area.
Except for there was a landscaping component in that area in the 2019 modification, this plan isn't the same as, like outside of the bio retention.
The whole area right to the curb was, curb line was set up like that. Was set up to be the bio retention area. It may, it, it, some of the plant materials may seem to be ornamentals and set up for, but you might consider to be aesthetic planting, but they're, all purpose of them is for stormwater quality.
So, so I don't know what to call this then. So outside of the depression, although still in the bio retention area.
Yes.
There were plants required in 2019 that are not here in 2022. Although there may be a lot more in the depression area, the ones that were out along, like by the parking lot, are not being planted except for.
Goddard, the way the garden's wetland plant designers told, told me is that they, some of those are going to be, they're, they're, they're going to move them out into more fringe areas in that, from that, the lowest area for them to be in areas that make sense in terms of the topographic belief that's out there. Some of them be right, come up to a little bit higher elevation, some of them be at lower elevation depending on the legislative soil. They're going to optimize those plantings in the field as they're being done. That's how, that's how that area is going to be planted.
Conservation, approve it.
Yes, they did, yeah, yeah. So, um, so it's playing, it's playing, it has been reviewed with conservation and it has been approved. So, um, there will be other, you know, there are other plants, materials in there that do, we might classify as ornamentals, but they're really, the purpose of them is for water uptake and, and.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mills?
So just to be clear, I think what Mimi's asking is from the prior plan, from the prior approval and everything, the plants that were supposed to be on there, she's saying, she doesn't see on here now and they weren't ever planted. She's asking why they're not on the current plan from the original approval that we gave a couple of years ago. Is that right?
I think that's, I, that's what I understand also.
Okay. So, so are you saying what's now being placed in the retention area is supposed to meet that need?
What, the plants that are shown in that it's centralized there are, are, will be placed in, in suitable places out at higher elevations pushed outward as, as the planting is being done and, and basically in the same location, some of the higher, the woodyer, woodyer tree, woody trees and shrubs out to those locations that were, where they were previously planted and, and missing. That's what I have been told in the field, that's what they're going to do. It's going to be a field process that it will be as, it will still, it will, it will have the same aesthetic.
But those, those plants all in there were required by Concom to be put in there? Is that correct?
In the area at, in the area total, uh, they're required. They're going to be in the area total. And some of the areas that are white spaces, some of those plants that are, seem to be all condensed in the middle, will be moved out to fringe areas depending on the, on the, uh, the optimal, optimal location for the plant material with the amount of wetness that's there.
Okay, but that's still what Concom's saying needs to be in there. Regardless, the plants from years ago on the submittal that got approved, where are those?
Those plants are in the, in that body of plants. There's, they're in that, in those plants, those number of plants. They're not in the exact same location as the previous prior plan was located. That's the, that, I mean, that's what the issue is, they're not in the exact same location.
I'm sorry, I thought you just agreed. All those plants in there is what Concom said had to be in there for uptake, for water uptake and pollutants. That's what you agreed to two minutes ago, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so where are all the plants from a couple of years ago when we approved this that were supposed to be planted not due to Concom in that area is what Mimi's saying.
There were no plants that were planted in that area that were not.
We're not talking about that area, I think.
No, the, the entire area, Mr. Mills, is that entire, is that entire shape, including the white areas out to the curb line. That's the bio retention area. That entire area was a conservation commission, um, planting.
Well, that's not, that's not what I had feared. We had a planting plan in 2019.
It was the planting plan for the bio retention area. I think what we can, we can, we can do and remedy this is to, is those, the plants that show up in the center of that plan right now are, include the plants that were also in the fringe areas originally. We can get them, we'll, we'll move them so they're located, so they're in the same kind of spacing as that plant, the original plan from 2019. And we can, we can move them out there and spread them out now on the plan. There might be some adjustments that are necessary in the field. Instead of having the, instead of having the biologist work with that number and move them out to something that's similar to what was, was shown on the plan years ago, we just do that, we'll do that right now. We can do that now, we can move them out to those areas and, um, so that it is the same look as the plan that was approved in, uh, 2018 or 17. We can do that, 19, thank you.
Modification, I'm just trying to determine.
No, I understand, I understand.
The process that you would comply with the 2019 and this just isn't. And when we went out there, a lot of plants were missing and a lot of dead.
They're not in the same look, they're not shown on the, this plan in the same location they were. The plants are there and all, the entire area is intended, not just the low area where those plants are gathered right now as bio retention, the entire area. Matter of fact, the edge, what's an important factor in this area is the grass edge along the parking lot where that's what captures the sediments and that's what needs to be cleaned up regularly, swept in the spring. But what's not, what, what wasn't accomplished here is putting the plants exactly in the locations as where they were prior. We can do that.
It looks something like this.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that that's the, well, that's the, I understand that we have to get over, we have to, we have to fix, I understand that.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I think the rub is that with the new addition and the new plan, the conservation has now approved a different bio retention area makeup on how it will be built and it's impacting where the old one was supposed to be. I understand that it did, they didn't survive or some of them weren't planted. But I think the new conservation commission order to create the bio retention area that they need requires all these plants and I think you need to check with Concom before we start moving.
Well, no, because this is, this was our, this was our wetland biologist's plan. It's not the conservation which said, okay, that's fine, but we, and we know that those are, that some of those are going to be moved out and spread out into more of the higher areas, the edge areas where, that were shown to be planted previously. They just did not do that now, wanted, they want to do it in the field. We're gonna, we'll do it now, we'll do it on paper now. And if there needs to be minor adjustments, they can make the minor adjustments instead of making major adjustments. But the plants on the plan are intended to fulfill the original plan and add more, which they do. The numbers are there. Okay, thank you.
So if Mr. Pizzoni is saying that the approved Concom bio retention makes compliance with the 2019 approval impossible, does that mean you will need, now need to go back to Concom with this revision?
No.
So why not?
No, because the plants are, the plants are in, the plants that are intended to make the plan the same as the 2019 plan are on that plan. They're, they're, they need to be moved and planted in more specific locations than they're shown right now.
So you're saying you can comply with what Mrs. Luttrell is saying?
Yes.
And it's not in conflict?
Yes.
With what was approved by Concom, contrary to what Mr. Pizzoni said?
No, no, he's.
I asked a question.
No, he asked me and I told him it's not.
I didn't say it was.
No, no, no.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't asserting that it's wrong.
He was concerned about it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
He was concerned about it.
Yeah, I was, I had a concern that I didn't want to have to trigger it.
Yeah, no.
Which it eventually does not.
The, it, it tended is that I believe that Melissa believes that she and the folk, our folks from Goddard, actually the, the, the wetland engineers on. The, it tended is that I believe that Melissa believes that she and the folks, our folks from Goddard, actually the, the, the wetland engineers on this planting plan are actually going to work in the field and, and move them. I say, well, let's get these woody trees, the larger stuff out where it will end up being anyway. It'll be the plan, um, it'll look a lot like the plan in, in as terms of a rebuild of the plan in 2019. Plus there'll be additional plants on it. It's satisfied, it'll satisfy, I believe, your, um, yes, satisfy both, both boards, the board and the commission. Yeah. Well, that took a little, I'm sorry.
Might we consider a condition at some point that would include a statement to the effect that the as-built landscaping, so there'll be an as-built of the landscaping included in the as-built, the final as-built and that perhaps there's some kind of sign-off related to that plan being reviewed by the town consultant and accepted by the planning board? Maybe a condition like that to ensure that the plantings do end up where they're supposed to be?
I think that is su, I, I, in our opinion is that would be suitable for the woody plants and shrubs, uh, the trees and shrubs.
We have to do that for conservation anyhow.
Yeah, yeah. The final plans, where those plants finally end up. And it's going to be not just, it will also be the, so it would be a sort of a joint condition, uh, we already have to do that for the commission, so. We might, we can do that for you guys too.
Is there a reason why you're leaving them in the bio retention area now? Was there a purpose for that?
Um, the purpose, it was explained to me is the purpose was make sure to get the biodensity, figure out what it was and then um, and then move them out to the locations. Uh, they thought that that was a job to be done in the field, not to be done on the plan right now, but um.
And if they don't meet the biodensity on what you're proposing, having all the plants in there?
It does mean, it, it does meet the biodensity and it's for the entire area. It's not just the area that's the lowest area that seems to show where all, where, where it shows where all the plants are. The bio retention area is that entire oblong amoeba shaped area, not just the low area. So the, that has the density for it, that, that all the plants that are shown on a plan is suitable for that solution.
So anything that's moved is moved within the bio area?
Right.
So if you're going to move something, it's going to be within the bio, um, what do you call it, the bio retention area?
Any, those plants are intended to be everywhere, anywhere between the edge of pavement and, and the wetlands in that, in that area. Not just where they're shown right now.
Thanks.
Thank you, Karina. And before we move on to the waiver, there was one, we did receive open, an open space set of recommendations today. Late, I guess this afternoon from Freddie. And I notwithstanding the response I made is that we expect everything to be okay and reasonable because of our prior discussions with, with, um, with the Open Space Preservation Commission. It was one condition, I don't know if the, if everyone on the board has that in front of them, it's still dated today um, to the planning board, but item number six is the one I'm not quite clear on and I wanted to make sure that we had a common understanding. It seems that what Freddie is saying here, the commission, the OSP commission is saying is that they'd expect wherever we do any grass seeding, that it would be um, only with native ground covers and native lawn alternatives. And I do believe we want to retain our ability to maintain the types of lawns that we have in the areas where we're going to be keeping the lawns. Um, and I don't know, Bill, if you would have a chance to see that yet. So I'm, I'm concerned with that, we're concerned with that, um, uh, condition that's being suggested. I don't know if we want to talk that out now, Karina or if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, to make a recommendation or response.
I haven't had a chance to review the letter completely, the second letter.
So just please take note that we're concerned with item number six and what that specifically means. Oh, she hear great, good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we'll let her speak, but I don't know what, you know, get about it.
Yeah, go ahead, Freddie. Hi, Freddie.
Hi, everybody, um, this is Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And in looking at the plans, it seemed there was some area, this is over, not, we understand your desire for the wide open lawn look that Ken's likes in the front. But when I was looking, we're looking at the plants over in the back, on the other side of the parking area, around like the bio retention area. On the other side towards the building, there's a lot of area that said, um, will be regraded and six inches of loam and seeded, loam and seeded, all that area. And that's not in the front of the building, it's in the side, it's not near a, you know, guest entrance area to our opinion. So why can't that be consistent with more recent planning board decisions that there's wonderful lawn alternative options instead of putting in more lawn in a site that has how many acres of lawn or grass, non-native grass?
Yeah, I think that, uh, I think in the major areas where, in the south side and in the north side along the driveway behind the building. And maybe on the west side of the building, I think that's where I think the owners would be most concerned to have is regular lawn. But I think you're right, in the areas, in the fringe areas. I, I think that's, I think that's suitable, Freddie, yes.
We're not asking to impact your lawn area, but the, if we can come up with the fringe areas is what I, what jumped out at me.
Okay, great.
And if that could be added to the plan and if the plant material could be agreed to be. I don't know that you have to decide it right now for your plans, can it be agreed to be through the town plan or to approve it? Like Harvard, Harvard University just agreed to, um, the little blue stem. Somebody else might agree to some other lower. Which the little blue stem, a patch of that is gorgeous, but you know, that might be too tall of a grass for the area. So maybe a sedge or a, um, prunelle is one of our new favorites or violets. There's, there's many, many options, wild strawberries. We're just putting in a lawn alternative demo area at the library that this summer you can come take a look at, but. Can I ask what the planning of the timeline for the building is? Once you break ground, how long before you're done?
Uh, I would say it's going to be, um, probably an eight month build out, I would say roughly, eight to nine, yeah.
That goes to another one of our comments, but I don't want to go through all our things now, just talking about the lawn. If we can come to some agreement that some of that fringe, what you're calling fringe area is what we're talking about.
Well, we have, we have time, we will have time to work that out with you, I would say. Making sure we have the right.
If the planning, if the planning board agrees.
Well, understood. We can, we can meet with you and the commission again. I know you had some trouble getting some meetings together.
Yeah, just been some traveling challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All said, can you move on to the waivers?
Yes, sir. And if you could, Colleen, bring up the waivers, that's great, I could use my computer to.
Before you move on, could I just jump in for one second? We had more landscape comments, were those at another point in this hearing tonight? Are you moving on from landscaping?
Thought we were done, but this will be the landscaping time.
All right, sorry, um, we had also made recommendations. Two other, two other key points. One was the, um, shrub in the, in the area in the 20-foot buffer zone adjacent to the wildflower meadow, which is the only area we are weighing in on for the wildflower area.
There, we call it enhanced wetland buffer.
So in that area, we're requesting all invasives be removed before plants are moved, put in, we noted a lot of multi-floral rose, maybe burning bush. Um, bittersweet, there were some other plants there, honeysuckle maybe.
That's right, no objection, Freddie, that we, I, we have no objection to that, that we have to do that anyway for, to establish that those wetland buffer plantings.
I spoke with the conservation agent and she said that the, the conservation commission may have not specified strongly enough that they expected those invasives to be removed and that would be certainly consistent with what they'd want. So that if the planning board can make that a part of their conditions, it would be welcomed. And then additionally, the area adjacent to the wildflower meadow, which is based on the recommendations from Dr. Robert Chigirre. We were hoping to add some of those shrubs, which we, we had talked about his list before. Aren't his shrubs and we'd like to substitute some of his. And I also checked with the conservation agent to make sure that was something that could be done. So certainly you could add more, but we're not asking you to do that, but she said if they were of like size and type, that, um, it could be dependent on a simple approval of the conservation agent, it would be a minor substitution. And I'll just list you the types of plants we're looking at, which are willows, swamp rose, high bush, blueberry, button bush. There's multiple, um, willows that could go in there.
I believe those are all, maybe, except for, with the exception of blueberry, I think they're all on that list.
For some reason, maybe I was looking at the wrong, I had trouble finding what the most updated list was. So as long as we can agree to that and come to that, um, consideration later. If that's all right with the planning board and Karina, um, be like with your approval and consultation with us, meeting with the project proponent to be approved by Concom in the wetland.
All right, I'll send you the, I'll send you the latest plan that we have in front of the planning board now.
Okay, and the, and the final thing was we had requested a bond. And I don't know if that's something you talked about later through the chair, or is that something for now?
That's for now, as far as I'm concerned.
So the position of the Open Space Commission is, given the timeline to establish one of these meadows, which is two to three years, which goes well beyond your eight-month construction, you'll be looking for a, and I'm not sure how all the other things you talked about, but you'll be looking for occupancy permits and everything else and the project will be done and we'll have no way of assuring that the meadow has been properly established. And that's why we believe, based on the fact that the prior meadow was required because the permit before that had inadequately been complied with. So that's where we, the meadow came in. Meadow was for modification after Ken's had done something from the prior permit before that. So then we have this meadow that now we're having an addition put in and there's no meadow there. So we feel that it's reasonable to ask for a bond that can, I don't know if the town would come in and establish the meadow if it doesn't get put in or how, I'm really not that familiar with a bond, but it, it doesn't seem extravagant, it just seems reasonable. So that's the point. Oh, and I just happen to have an estimate, I happen to have an estimate for 34,000 square foot wet meadow.
Right, it's 11,400 bucks. So let's, let's hear you say that's okay, work it out with the town planner.
I would suggest that we don't have to deal with that. It's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Freddie?
No, thank you very much and it's been, um, I look forward to working with, um, Ken's at a future open space meeting to iron out the final details, thank you.
John, will that be a, um, bond in the form of a cashier's check for an escrow account?
We decide.
To be established?
You, you work it out, yeah, you work it out with Mr. Pizoni. That's for this, that's for this, it's not, it's not necessarily setting a precedent for the, uh, following, uh, follow-on discussion relative to uh, the noise, uh, this is, um, this is something everyone's in agreement, uh, to, and it's, um, it, it's, there's a couple of different ways of doing it. The simplest and easiest way for the town to use the bond is the way to go. And the best way to go is to have Ken's do it right and they get all their money back.
Yep.
Onto the waivers.
Thank you. All right, so, um, the first waiver on the list is one that does, deals with the parking. And this comes up on the list, um, because we have, uh, there's 81 parking spaces that were approved for the existing warehouse. And as, um, I think everybody understands that there's no, there's no expectation at all for any increase of personnel at the site. And so there's no need for expansion of parking or additional parking spaces. This got a little complicated when I believe one of the consultants, I believe it was Fosse O'Neil, noted that there were 10 other, nine other spaces, um, on the site. And I think they misunderstood that those spaces are actually the block warming spaces for the cabs, for the trailers. But we could see a, a situation where, uh, they might, um, uh, be, it might be perceived as regular parking spaces and people use them. So we have no objection to having this changed to 90, 90 spaces, um, from the 81. But we do need a renewal on this, um, off-street parking number that, um, that the 81 or the 90 are sufficient for the use under, uh, section 174 dash 12B 10. So.
If something changes in Ken's future such that the required, uh, number of spaces based on the square meters of the building
Yeah.
need to be built, do you have the space to do that?
We do have oppo, opportunities for doing that, uh, within the, uh, truck, uh, dock, truck yard area itself. There's some areas that, um, that are available there on the edges, for instance, that block, block, cab block area is one. And, um, there are some opportunities for some additional striping in the northeast section that, uh, that we also have also, so.
We have other facilities in town. Coming to mind is the Walgreens at the Fable lights, where the required number of spaces, um, were not built. They were, uh, but the space, the, the grassed area nearest Oak Hill Road and the actual traffic lights, if you go there, you'll see this grass there.
Yeah.
That, uh, space is available if new, new spaces have to be added. So once, once it's determined that you have the space for them, but you don't really need to build them and don't.
Right, so they're, they're reserved spaces essentially.
And you get green space instead of fade, that nobody parks. Is the board, is the board having any questions on this? So, uh, I think the way we usually do this is, uh, if, unless somebody objects to this, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll move on to the next one and then we'll maybe take a vote on all, all of the waivers at the end. Entertain the most for that, so it looks like you're good to go on this one.
I think, I think it makes sense, thank you. Um, the next waiver has to do with, uh, the topography. This is one that the board, I believe, um, uh, fairly regularly, um, would approve and approved it last, uh, last time on this project, was to allow us to work with the, uh, uh, topography plan of, of, uh, two-foot contours instead of one-foot contours.
Any objections to this, Will? Good, good to go.
Thank you. Um, the next waiver is three-point, from regulation 3.6.7, that's to provide. Um, and thank you, Colleen or Karina, who's ever scrolling through these for us. and thank you, Colleen or Karina, who's ever scrolling through these for us. To provide groundwater contours and groundwater out there, of course, we all know is shallow. This, this, on this site, this doesn't provide us with information that is impacts the the design or decision. We already know we're, we're against the groundwater on this site. So it's shallow throughout the site. So we asked for a waiver on this like we did last time.
I think that you have numerous iterations of stormwater calculations.
I'm at a planning board meeting for Ken's.
Has has
Just got.
Providing more information than we would normally get relative to this requirement.
Right. And we did get a chance to put our eyeballs on the groundwater in December, which is great.
Now, if, if the situation was a little bit different, this may be a site where actually this would be very important.
I agree.
But, and because we all know it's high groundwater here, so it's important to know where that is. But based on what you've studied over multiple iterations here, we know where it is.
Yeah.
And we know what it does.
Yeah. And we know how, and we know how the underground systems are working.
Anyone object to this one? Let's go to the next one.
Thank you. This, the next one might be related to that also. Water balance calculations in the same, same territory as the groundwater. This site, we, we, we know the flows very well, what's going through the site, how it contributes to the brook and how it runs through. And I've done, as the chairman's pointed out, a number of iterations on that. That we don't believe that this is a site that's critical to the water balancing for the region. So.
Anyone? Mr. Stein.
So it's a pretty big, decent-sized commercial facility.
It is.
The conditions environmentally change year to year.
I, 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 I don't necessarily think that they've changed that much actually out there. What has changed out there, Mr. Stein, is the we had eliminated some Beaver dams lower things, really helped out the facility a lot with drainage system, our underground system, and also actually helped out properties on the other side of Route Nine also, and down Route Nine. All those commercial properties are suffering from the raise, rise in the two-foot of, so that's really the change that's been made. In several years I've been familiar with the site. Other than that, really, little has changed.
So three point eleven, if I read it correctly, is for an annual, basically, summary report analysis of the discharge runoff, including the septic for the facility. So that's kind of a significant waiver of, of our environmental protection. But I'm open to hearing what you have to say about it.
Yeah. The interesting, the septic system is up, as you're probably familiar with, it's up on high on that bound on the north side of the site, between the site, the commercial, it's in the residential zone property actually, to the north of the site. And it's really, it's down gradient of the majority of the site, which is lower, which hits, which is influenced by this groundwater, this high groundwater. And the production, should I say, in terms of sewage flow is rather small for this, for this site, even though it's a large facility. So really, it's the, the big influence on the site is stormwater. Not really wastewater, wastewater is, but has, has a very small amount of contribution in terms of gallons, in terms of, into the site and into the, into the systems. So I don't know.
Well, do you have a plan B in case we don't give you the waiver?
Well, plan B would be to, to do the calculation. But is to go through the process and, and provide those on, I guess it sounds like an annual basis, though I don't remember that in particular in the regulations is something that was looked at as an annual basis, what was sort of to take, I thought it was a snapshot really of current conditions. And I think I mean, that would be the fallback is to, is to do the calculation.
Thanks.
Don't think it's, I don't think it's going to get, gather, we're going to gather much from it.
As was the last time that there was an issue there with the water backing up, and it was impacting Ken's more than anybody else down the way. It's in their best interest to make sure that things continue to flow there and there is no backup.
So why ask for the waiver then?
Well, we, we asked for the waiver because we're providing it. We provided the report once. Maybe doesn't want to have to do it again this time.
On an annual basis, per the regulation.
Yeah. I, I don't know if it's anyone.
Because it says in there.
Not hearing. Just me.
It is an annual basis, just so you know. It says a yearly budget.
And then, uh, thank you. And then waiver three point twelve is a hydrogeologic assessment. And we believe this is really the same, really primarily the same issue as the groundwater contouring and, and what tell, you know, maybe describe what's happening on the site, but it's pretty clear what's happening. The site's groundwater is moving from west to east along with the stream and then down that, down that steep brook, following that steep brook headed down towards the wetlands by the schools and over to the reservoir. So the site's right on the, is right on the premises, so to speak, before it falls off that steep, down that steep slope down behind. What used to be the dairy farm, where the, where their homes now are deerfoot. So. So we're asking for a waiver for that for the same reason for the, the groundwater contouring is that it's not, it wouldn't shed a lot of any information that we don't all know from basic analysis of the site, the test pits that we have and what we've, what we see happening on the ground and under the ground.
I tend to feel the same way with three eleven and three twelve in that it's expensive, it's a lot of work. And if the value would be especially based on the amount of information we have on the ground. So would the board consider holding off on granting three eleven and three twelve waivers? Karina, do you think there's any benefit to huddling with conservation? To see, get their opinion? Melissa's opinion relative to the value of three eleven and three twelve?
Yes, there's always great value in corresponding and huddling with conservation agent. It can only help clarify what's right.
We, we have requested the similar waiver, these similar waivers with the conservation commission already.
Well, I think the planning board would be more comfortable granting the waivers, I think. Or, or close to the science, but Concom in this, in this site and in this regard, is a lot closer to it. And having their opinion would be valuable for it and to compare to whichever way the board decides to go.
Would point out, Mr. Chair, that conservation did approve it and grant those two waivers.
Not that we don't believe you, but we'll still have we'll still have the town planner huddle with conservation and have some technical opinion or guidance for the next planning board meeting.
Bill, were those approved at the last conservation meeting?
Yeah, we have the order.
Yeah, we had the whole order.
Yeah, I don't have to listen. Yes, the hearing was closed with waivers.
With those waivers.
And she filed it with the court priority too.
Without the info in front of me, we're looking at three eleven and three twelve. Is that the same? That's not the same as what conservation weighed? Not those same?
They don't weigh, they didn't regulations.
No, they're not.
Have to have a similar.
They're, they're, yeah, within the stormwater management.
Right.
Permit. It's not called exactly the same, but.
Okay. So it's worth, it's worth huddling with them.
Not the exact same.
What's next?
I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman.
So does everybody have their homework assignments as far as we, we made some agreements with the landscaping as far as becoming conditions? With the materials, with the bond, who's going to do what, when? I'll go one more time through the board. And then we'll open it up to the public. And then if there's nothing else, if everybody's set with the way forward, then we continue to hear. Mr. Bill, is any questions, anything to add, comments?
Well, I just want to make sure I'm clear that the conditions from the twenty nineteen plan, have they all been met? Like the pipe that supposedly went over a gas line.
It's a good idea to go over that.
Is that all?
The, the repair work has been reviewed, dare I say, okay, by Fosse O'Neill. They don't have, indicated any exceptions. Yeah, there's a couple of pipe repairs that need to be made and of course new outlet controls, one for each of the underground systems. So instead of there being one, there's two. That's all, that design's all done and been reviewed.
So just to be clear, Andrew, those have not been constructed. Those repairs are in design only. They are not actually fixed yet.
And we will get them and we're going to build them first before we move ahead with any other drainage system. We're going to get them as-built and such. That's part of the conditions.
Yeah, they were approved with the condition that that work be done before we start on the next phase.
Like as-built.
I, as an engineer, I believe that Fosse O'Neill was worn down by these discoveries and problems. And they were biting their engineer in tongue by saying, okay, go ahead and do it. Go ahead and implement these recommendations. So it's not the greatest engineering practice in the world, but I'm with the way this is going in that we have professional engineers looking at this. Theoretically, it should work and once it's built, we'll be able to see if it does. Doesn't work, back to our intent.
It's also my intention to, it's also my intention that one of the conditions or several of the conditions will apply to the process of construction phasing to ensure that the prior permits are met. And proven that they, you know, the, the site plan is built to meet those criteria before they continue. And then also that the proponent be required to provide escrow fees for, or retainer fees for inspections by our town consultant during construction. To ensure that items are completed as shown on the plan and then as-built, final as-built will be very specifically outlined to include all the site plan features. Provide a final as-built of everything.
Understood without objection. Yeah.
Mr. Stein. Well, I mean, there's a lot here with the waivers and the landscaping, open space issues, but everything that's been covered makes sense so far. So.
Slowly getting into a package that everyone can agree upon and understand.
Everything but noise and that will be discussed later?
We can discuss that after we get through this, the engineering part of it.
Okay. So far so good.
Okay. So if, if that's the case then.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's go on to the noise before we continue the hearing with the understanding that and Karina, why don't you update us on the latest with the noise? I think, I think you did mention the message we got today relative to.
Sure. Let me just give you a quick synopsis. Hold on a second. Uh, so we received an email from Heather Elkier, who's Board of Health Director. And she reviewed Attorney Pizzoni's memo from May, May, uh, May fourth with a summary of the history of the site plan approvals. And she indicated that documents seem generally sound. The Abutters' complaints from Flag Road all note the onset of the noise disturbance in late two thousand nineteen, but following, but following comment seems not an accurate description. So there was a statement in your letter, Bill, of concern by the Abutters is reported as being intermittent, not, and not at any regular, particular time of day and is only substantively, substantively heard when the foliage is down between December through May. From what she had heard from a Butters' note, noise is loudest December through May, but still has, but still some in the rest of the year, noise disturbances heard intermittently, but I might say something like the intensity of noise varies, but tends to be heard louder in the evening and overnight as well as on Sundays. So that's a specific thing from the director, from working with you, which we forwarded to you. So you would have some, you can refer to that email as to what she meant by that. And then more generally, we received an email from Board of Health Chair Chelsea Malinowski. Very quickly and summarizes everything nicely. And she apologizes for not being able to attend this evening. She had a conflict. She says the Board of Health, along with the Health Director, completed an information site visit on April fourteenth at Ken's on Route Nine to observe operations. The Board then deliberated on April twenty-fifth, which was recorded and available on Town's YouTube site. The Board's next steps are to hold a meeting for an Abutter and their sound engineer to present their findings in a separate meeting with Ken's sound engineer to discuss remediation options. Those meetings are tentatively scheduled for May twenty-fourth and May thirty-first at nine thirty a.m. We invite any planning board members, as well as anyone from the public, to attend or reach out with any comments or questions. The Board is looking forward to finding a resolution and appreciate the collaborative effort from the Butters and Ken's. My intention is to update the planning board at, as this continues to make progress. Again, that's from Board of Health Chair Chelsea Malinowski in an email today.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The reiteration of what I said in my letter about the sound being intermittent, mostly and heard in the winter, was based on prior emails, presentation by Abutters, including Mr. Mara at ZBA and at this board. If you look back, at emails and memos that have been sent to you, I was reiterating what they had said, that they hear it, they don't hear it all the time. It's worse in the winter. And in fact, when I checked the logs to see when any complaints were raised, none of them were after May, but into December. They were all in December and January and February. So that led me to believe that that was the only time they were hearing it. It allowed effort. That being said, as I said in my memo, you know, there's a lot of history with this site. Ken's has always stepped to the plate to do what is right. They built the sound wall in the back while they could operate for a year or so, just to make sure that the Butters weren't hearing anything. Although they don't believe they're violating any regulatory, state, federal or municipal noise bylaw at this time. They're willing to work with the Board of Health, which we've met with them, we are meeting with them. I did ask the Board of Health, since Mr. Marius said she's going to come with her expert and they're going to present their report. We've never seen a report that contradicts what we said from an expert. There's been no expert testimony before this board, submitted before this board. It's expert that says we violate any regulatory standards. It's expert that says we violate any regulatory standards. Granted, there's noise, but we may not be exceeding that. Kens is willing to continue to work with that. And in fact, we're of the opinion that it isn't even, it isn't loading dock noise. It's the refrigeration units that have to be running in order to pre-cool before they're loaded and after they're loaded, sitting in the lot when it reaches a certain number. And that just may occur a couple, two or three times a week. I don't know, I don't live there. I know all as I was doing was reiterating what other abutters had said to us, comments that have been made on the record and actually meetings with the Board of Health on, on site. Uh, I'd suggest that I provided proposed uh, con- uh, condition that Kens is willing to work with and having incorporated into the decision. Where, although I'm not sure legally you can do it, but we won't even argue that point. We're willing to go along with it, put something in it, as long as it's consistent with what I submitted. I don't believe there's a need for a bond, Kens stepped to the table before on that. They've got a wall out back that, you know, they, they hoping that they can reuse it actually and repurpose it on the other side, if that's what's necessary. But our expert is willing to work with Mr. Maria's expert, look at what the issues are. To date, he's, they never reached out to us with their expert, other than once to meet on site when we ran the first test. Kens wants to just work with the neighborhood and try to get it done. But we do not believe that we're violating any, any noise issues. So why don't I open it up to the board? On the noise issue, Mr. Mills, any questions or comments?
So I guess my still working with the neighbors and the health department and everything, how much longer do you see before they go resolution is?
Well, if I could, Mr. Mills, I've been waiting since the fall to see a report from our experts so that we can collaborate and work on it. And have seen nothing to date. Neither has the Board of Health, neither has this board. So it's kinda hard to work in a vacuum, but we are, we are committed to meet with the Board of Health, work with them. We're gonna bring our expert. Our experts already kinda looked at it to say if this is what the issue is, he's working on the potential remedy. We don't wanna build something not that electric.
Understood.
You know, and Kens is willing to do what they need to do to reasonably bring all noise down to where it should be uh, and not be offensive. When I chew up again, we had one abutter who responded to an email, uh, a flyer that was put in their mailbox about the sound. And he sits on the zoning board and he said, he doesn't hear Kens. He lives up on Oak Street, just a couple of doors now from Deb and her husband. And he says, I hear Route 9 and 105, I don't hear Kens. So if it's our issue, we're gonna get on top of it and we're gonna work on it. And we've made that commitment in my proposal. I anticipate if the experts can get together and meet and talk with Board Health, we may be able to figure out a resolution over the next several months. But then if, if a resolution requires, let's say a wall and the wall's not, even if it's on the property line or at the edge of the parking lot, we have to come back to you guys to look at that. And we also have to design it to make sure it doesn't impact with any of the stuff that's been approved for.
Right.
And, and everything that's in the ground.
Yeah.
And make sure that that can be put in. So that's probably another month of design purposes. I think I put in my proposal that we'd be back before you guys and have something submitted by September 1st so that we can get it approved, if we need to get it approved with a minor modification from you guys, so that we can get it built before winter. That's, that's our plan, but without cooperation, we can't read that.
Uh, reserve my questions till after.
Mr. Stein?
Mr. Stein? So the Board of Health Chair is indicating you have a meeting scheduled for May 24th and May 31st with the abutters and the sound engineer.
But you want me to clarify that?
Please.
There's a meeting on the 24th with Mr. Mera and her expert in the Board of Health. Unfortunately, we had a conflict and they had already scheduled us for the 31st of May. And Mr. Maria couldn't make it because she was gonna be away. So they accelerated her meeting until the 24th. Our meeting will come in, hopefully we'll have the benefit of her sound experts' testimony and submissions of Board of Health so we can review it before we come in on the 31st. And then sit and talk logically with the Board of Health as to what needs to be resolved and done.
Let me read that back. Sure. The meeting with the abutters and their sound engineer on May 24th.
No. Mr. Maria and her expert are meeting with the Board of Health on the 24th.
God, you will not be present.
Right, that's because it had originally been scheduled for 31st to coordinate our expert, me, and I'm going in for some surgeries this month. So I wasn't available on the 24th. And, and Mr. Bond, we're all, we're all available and we had hoped that they could make it, they couldn't. We would have bumped it so we could all be there the same day, but she was only available on the 24th.
So, so therefore your intent is to get the feedback from the Board of Health after that?
And show up on the 31st for a meeting with the Board of Health and our expert to go over everything.
Gotcha. So is it even possible that we would have this all resolved before this board votes on this agenda item, in your opinion?
No, because you, you won't have a plan that's able to be incorporated into something until September.
So what is your expectation of this board relative to this aspect of the hearing?
Well, the, the sound issue that is at hand has to do with the Board of Health. It's not even within your jurisdiction. The only reason it's, it's being talked about is because you guys believe that we're supposed to build the canopies off the side of the building. Again, we disagree there, you know, my position on that and where we are. And we are trying to find a resolution to make it work.
So can I clarify?
Sure.
In my opinion, this board just always hears out of abutters.
Oh, yeah.
On all concerns that abutters raise.
Right.
And gives credence and we seek to have resolutions that are satisfactory to all parties.
Right.
What abutters have concerns.
Kens is one of those parties.
Of course, yeah. So again, I'm just trying to get a sense of what you're, what you see as a possible outcome here relative to this aspect in our.
An approval of conditions.
And what exactly you think in there for the condition?
I submitted a condition on my memo, it's a very.
Sorry. I missed that. I'll review that and pass. This is what's else.
Couple of things, just to um, set the record straight in your memo, you refer to um the 2019 modification.
Yes.
Um, well, that was necessitated because uh, you changed you changed the requirements of the 2017 major site plan and lower impact development approvals required to uh, file for a modification, but changes were already made prior. Just so that, set the record straight since the, you didn't decide to seek a modification because it was already, you already did it.
Well, that was a removal of pavement.
There was a removal of pavement in the back.
And also.
We were making more green spaces and getting rid of it.
Well, just.
Okay.
We did, we came in after.
Um, and then talk about moving the 2014, the wall that is a condition of a special permit from 2014.
Yes.
So there aren't um, complaints from those neighbors. And I don't know if it's because the wall, the wall was there. And I would be very hesitant to remove something that's working. And it's a condition of a previous approval.
It was, it was found by the same ZBA in a hearing after that, that that wall wasn't doing anything any longer. There was, there was no truck traffic back there anymore. There was just automobiles going to the back. You can't drive trucks back there because of, under the prior decisions that were received from the ZBA. So there's no truck activity. That wall sits there and does nothing now, because all you do is hear a car go by.
Maybe, uh, we don't know. I don't, this, yeah, we all do respect that.
Yeah.
Um, and also it's unknown whether the noise violates any uh, bylaws because this, the noise study was not done to, to these standards.
Actually, the noise study was done at the request and requirements promulgated by the abutters and the experts on how it should be run. There's been nothing that shows that we violate any noise standards.
Right, because it wasn't done.
Well, no, it, it, even that, even that report.
So how do you?
Even that report, it, even that report said that we weren't in violation.
Then on to the run to the press of this, the way I see this, um, the Board of Health, Public Safety, Noise is completely different from zone. We have a zoning requirement that requires enclosed space, not covered space. So whether the Board of Health is having meetings or whatever, that doesn't absolve you from the zoning requirements for enclosed space.
I, I put forward my argument on that several times already, that you guys approved a plan that didn't require that. Two plans now, two stuff 17 and two 19, it didn't have them on and just because the waiver wasn't granted, you approved the plan. So there's a, this, this is a disagreement between you and I, I understand that. It's a de facto, it's a de facto approval and fine, if you wanna, if, I guess I can say this. If you think that you're gonna sit here and say, no, we're gonna deny it, you have to build those overhangs. We're gonna end up in court. We're not trying to.
Overhangs and closed.
In, in closed spaces, however you wanna interpret it. If that's what you wanna do, then that's where we're gonna end up. But it isn't gonna resolve the noise issue for the neighbors. We're trying to resolve the noise issue for the neighbors here. And to require Kens to build something that isn't, because the testimony even of your neighbors, the Board of Health, everybody that's been out there is it's not normal noise that you hear at the loading docks. So you're gonna build something that isn't even gonna cure the issue. So why spend the money doing it? Let's spend the money and do it right. And that's what Kens is trying to do here.
Would you build a cold tunnel instead?
A what?
A cold tunnel?
It's a cold tunnel.
So you don't have to run the refrigerated units and they, you park them inside a cold tunnel?
That would probably take more design. You've got the circulation and everything there already in place, the way it goes. I don't know how you would set up, because I don't even know what it is, cold tunnel, let's be honest with you. And I don't know if it's a long, uh, compartment, is it a barn or what is it? Uh, and I don't know how that's gonna affect the circulation for Kens. And is that gonna resolve the issue? Because it's gonna be sometimes that those trucks with the refrigeration aren't in that tunnel and that they're on site. And the problem is when there's a large number of them there and they're all running together, it's a cumulative effect. And if we can find a way to do something that will resolve that for the benefit of your abutters and the benefit of Kens, Kens is willing to do it and they've been trying to do it with their expert.
So so the, the cold tunnel would solve the problem of noise, but also solve the problem of pollution. So all those diesel engines are running for hours on hours and dozens of trucks. There's tons of pollutants spilling into the air also.
I don't know about that. There aren't, there aren't that many there, most is probably 30 at a time.
That's, that's a lot.
They're not all running, three at a time. Some of them, some of them don't have refrigeration, some of them do.
How many are running at a time?
I don't know. I, I mean, I don't run the logistics.
And how long do they run for?
They run, under federal regulation, they have to chill the units and get them chilled and they load up and then they're sitting there before they leave.
And that's how long?
I wouldn't know. How long are they on site?
Three hours.
Three hours.
Do you think 30 trucks run for three hours?
No. There's 10 days to load and there's usually 10 stacked down in front of it.
Can I just interject? Bill, recently you did some testing out there, not really testing, I should say, but you did some observations. Um, I think the Board of Health was there with you to look at um, the refrigeration units and incrementally turning them off to see, or turning them on to see what threshold the abutters then noticed a noise. Is that correct?
Worked with Jim and the Board of Health wasn't present during that. It was just Jim and the abutter, because he was available, the abutter was available that evening. They would run a sequence of five or 10 or 15 or 20 to see what the level of the noise was, or even if they heard it. And I'm not sure what the, you know, the threshold was. I think, what is it, like about 12 or 15, they started to hear it.
I think you mentioned that when we spoke, yeah, that you said something like 12 to 15.
And at 20, I think they could hear it real well. And that's when we realized, well, this is something that we need to take care of, because it's not the trucks at the base. It's in the parking lot. And what do we do? We need to create sound absorption between your abutters and those trucks. And.
So, so when you.
Further away, the further away from the trucks they are, the worst effect, it's not as effective, because sound travels up. So you gotta move that, that wall closer.
How does the wall reduce the pollution from the diesel?
It doesn't, but they don't violate any, any, any laws right now or regulations. If they did, they'd be on governors and I know Deb put forward uh, the, the proposal by one of the senators. That's in Congress right now, it's being looked at, it's set out to the Federal Transportation Commission. That's probably not gonna be addressed until next year.
You can be ahead of game. So then, so my issue is that this does not apply to so, being closed. And when you were here in 2017, the, the frequent night operations was never mentioned.
It was running 24/7 since 2014. That operation's been running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, since they got their approvals in 2014.
That's, that's all I have.
Mrs. Moore?
Um, I'm gonna withdraw my.
Mr. Morris? Back to Mr. Stein. Thank you. Um, so regarding the proposed condition, and my apologies for this and that.
No problem.
Um, and during this is the trails, questions, uh, we'll read it very carefully a few times. And I just had a question. Would you be open to inserting where it says Kens, under the heading no, low frequency noise mitigation? Uh, letter I, Kens commits to continue to work with the Board of Health and insert the language and abutters to the site to address the low frequency noise. Is that language you might be?
I think that was my attempt.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we, it tends, it tends to, we need a lead first. We need a board that's gonna take this by the horns, okay? And we're gonna bring our experts and we're gonna bring Kens. We are hopeful that the abutters are there and that it's any abutter that's a back, not just one, but several. Because, you know, I, I was in Deb's email as after when she mentioned 20. I've only seen police reports and comments from a handful. So I don't know where these 20 are, but we're, we're open. And is Chelsea Malinowski's email to you, please, with people to come? So come. You know, that's the only way we're gonna work it out and get it done right.
And um, for the bond, which I do feel that would be appropriate. I certainly understand why you wouldn't wanna do it, but I think we should. Do you, I mean, what, I guess I would actually pose this question to you, Mr. Chairman, is now the appropriate time to discuss that? Do you, I mean, what, I guess I would actually pose this question to you, Mr. Trump, is now the appropriate time to discuss that? Is that the?
It should be, uh, discussed now, I think, uh, relative to the willingness to post a bond. Um, and then maybe as we get closer, the amount of the bond and the type of, I think you indicated it was a tripartite.
I indicated in my email, if you were inclined to go that way, I would hope that it would be in the form of some sort of tri-party agreement. I mean, KENS is gonna have to outlay a lot of money to build this thing. If he has a lot of money sitting in this pile with you guys, and he's spending a lot of money here, that's not fair to them.
You know, that's, that's where, uh, town, town council would help us. We've, we've done those.
Yeah.
We've done those. There's a com- there's a comfort level of the different types. Under the cash bond, there's no comfort, there's a maximum comfort. We have US, American dollars in a bank. KENS disappears, there's the money. Right? And then there's other layers below that, types of, uh, bonds that we could get, including the ones that we got in the eighties, when the banks folded, they weren't worth the paper that was written on. So we haven't gone that way in a long time. But we have done a tri-party. Not that one. I forget what, what.
Yeah, and it would be, it's one of these things where the, the funds are basically reserved at the bank. You know, KENS, let's say they have an account, you know, you just gotta make sure it doesn't go below that.
Well, there's also language in there that says who can access.
Right, yeah. And, and we would expect that, that, you know, the Board of Health could say, okay, release X of it because we put the wall up, you know, or, you know, release Y, because they had to pay for it, the wall. You know, that type of thing.
We've seen them where the, in the fine print, it says that the bank and the proponent have access to the money.
Right.
To say something about town, so choose.
Would you have your approval?
No, we never went with this.
I mean, we read the fine print, I said, no. Well, I didn't write that one. And I don't know who town council was at the time.
Uh, I'm just curious, between, like, um, in the past, I've heard that, uh, Ray's barbecue sauce, it's coming out of that facility and things like that. You know, I look at the, like, infrequently go to the grocery store. Uh, the KENS products that I see are all just left out on the shelves. So I'm curious, what products are going, have to go in a cooled truck?
I mean, I, I can let Jim speak to that, but my understanding of it is it's all the products that go to restaurants that have to be refrigerated. So it's about.
There's a greater demand for organics.
Twenty percent of facilities.
Twenty percent of the facilities.
Also run refrigeration units in the wintertime. Even the dry.
Yeah. Okay.
Just curious.
No, it's, it's not just me, baby.
No, I, I know. There's everything.
Like a lot, tons of salad dressings, I love the Italian and the ranch and everything else, but, uh, so. But I always see it out on the shelves, not in refrigerator.
But there, but there's a whole institutional side of it, KENS as well. Where they service all these restaurants and other facilities.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Stein?
Thank you.
Before I go to the, the, the neighbors. Um, Bill, earlier you said that the neighbors don't have, have not produced a report relative to the sound.
Right.
Um, but neither have you. Neither has KENS.
We produced the report in the beginning, when we did the, we addressed it the way that they requested us to, and the conclusion was that we didn't violate any D E B standards, but nobody came up with a resolution.
This is a way to come up with a resolution. Nobody has, um, used science, as far as I can tell, to determine the, um, source of sound energy.
It was determined before, in our experts' analysis, that the sound could have been refrigeration. But now we're honed in on it, because when Jim ran the test with the abutters, that's when we realized what was going on. It was a low frequency noise.
Well, it seems like both sides have, have some work to do, and, um,
Yeah.
Have their, um, sound engineers do the science. As most engineers do, is work, work it out so that there's a mutual understanding of the science, so that it's either conclusive or mostly conclusive. Sounds a tricky thing, they don't know that.
Yeah, no, we're, we're hoping that we can come to a consensus as to what we reasonably believe is the issue, and, and work on it, and find a resolution that we reasonably think both experts and the Board of Health is gonna address this issue.
So why don't I open it up? Deb, did you wanna go first?
I just want, can I just have a point of clarification?
Go ahead, Karen, Karen.
Um, the tripartite agreement that you were discussing previously, is that in rel- is that relative to the noise issue? Or the loading?
Yes. Well, they're connected. It's the same issue.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. Also, just wanna note that, um, Heather Elk here also has had her hand raised for a while, just so you know.
Well, let's go to Heather, town official. Go ahead, Heather.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, good evening. Um, I was listening, and I, um, just agree with a lot that's been said. Like I said, I worked with Chelsea Malinowski, and we, um, sent that email today. We were, um, pleased that we'll be working with KENS and working to, um, resolve the issue. I would agree with Ms. Latrell on her, um, interpretation of the design of the prior sound study. I would also agree with your comment, Mr. Morris, about, um, the reports not being ready. I think that, I don't think there's been any non-cooperation. I think that the pace of getting, um, a privately engaged sound engineer and getting reports done is that pace. So I think that's just done now. So time-wise, we're trying to work as quickly now that that report is, um, being completed. And we've been trying between the Board of Health and abutters and their experts and KENS, and their experts to find one meeting date and have been unable to, is basically where we're at. And so that's why we have a meeting May twenty-fourth and May thirty-first. And we told, um, all parties that if possible, or if it, it leads to that, perhaps the end of June, we could get everyone all together at one meeting. But my understanding is potentially the, a butter sound experts could come both May twenty-fourth and thirty-first. Anyways, we obviously would prefer one meeting for everybody, but just logistically, that hasn't worked out. So this, we're trying to do it as soon as possible, hear from folks now that the report is ready.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Comments? Go ahead, Deb.
I'm kind of trying to.
Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening. Um, yeah, so it's likely to see that there may finally be some action on this. That sounds true, like you mentioned, but it doesn't meet the standards and doesn't really prove whether or not anything's exceeding any of that. It was done two years ago. We probably do this every week, every weekend, every night, since then. And for sixty-nine months before then. That's, uh, ten houses either side of it. Um, you know, we spend ten to thousands of dollars on our own sandwich. Spent additional legal fees for that. It's looking for relief. So another six to nine months, doesn't really sound good. And the planning board, um, is limited in what it can do about the noise. And that's why we've been keeping this focus down, so we have a zoning. And the planning board is supposed to make sure that it's conform to the zoning. And there's two ways to make this one conform to the zoning. Enclosed spaces or limited nighttime operations. That's what we have. Thank you.
Debbie, can you read fifty, it's flag road? Um, I think we really need to make this less about me. I see that that's been a topic for a number of years. Um, this has been going on for a number of years, and luckily we've had multiple hearings. There's been police reports, there's been discussions through public health director, there's been notes, letters to this board and others. And I just would like to read you the addresses that, um, of people who, um, I think keeping track since, um, the zoning board of appeals took up this matter in May twenty-twenty-one, I think. So this is over the last year. The number of complaints that have come out, these are not the, uh, neighbors on the east side. These are ever since the two thousand nineteen reconfiguration to the northwest side. We have neighbors at seventy-three flag road, sixty-four flag road, sixty-six B flag road, sixty flag road, fifty-eight flag road, fifty-six flag road, fifty-four flag road, fifty flag road, forty-eight flag road, forty-six flag road, twenty-eight flag road, twenty-four flag road, seventy-six deer foot, seventy-seven deer foot, seventy-nine deer foot, twelve orchard, fourteen orchard, nineteen orchard, twenty-seven Parkerville, one thirty-four deer foot across the street, and one twenty-two deer foot across the street. So, um, this is a really serious matter. And I know that noise shouldn't be really seen for this board. Um, but in essence, that, you know, when KENS did receive the twenty-four seven operations on zoning in two thousand fourteen, there was a significant section that was put into place as a condition for them to police themselves. What has happened is, it's been pushed to the neighbors to police KENS. So really, not much has been done. In fact, there were some cover bays, as Mr. Pizzoni will tell you, that were moved, you know, closed out or whatever. And when they were moved to the, uh, the western side, they weren't even closed. So now all the bays really are, are open. It's impossible to tell where the noise is coming from, because the study that was proposed by Mr. Pizzoni to the neighbor at twenty-four flag, who has since left, um, was not in compliance with the national. But what we agreed is that we would look at the data and use the data and try to sort it out. What it did show is significant nighttime operations. And I don't think anybody knew that. It showed forty-six percent based on the truck in, truck out data that they provided. Um, so, uh, you know, there, there we have it. Um, we do know that every, uh, every decision by this planning board, and in fact, all boards in town, say, state that the proponent must be in compliance with all, you know, previous conditions. Um, there is a zoning code in town. And you have to ask yourself, why is there a zoning requirement for enclosed bays? Um, you had a proponent come to you, Harvard University, and they were proud to announce that their bays were enclosed. And no griping, no complaining, and no telling you how expensive it was. It was in their opening statement. And so we do have precedent of a, uh, you know, project, it's a smaller project, of course, but they enclose their bays. If the bays were enclosed at KENS, we wouldn't have to know whether it was because truck idling or, you know, at loading at the bay, or whether these were, you know, compressor trucks or whatever that were running. So I have to think that the people that, you know, in town who cast that bylaw for bay enclosures, uh, were really trying to prevent a racket from happening overnight. And we have a racket, and it's happening every single night. And so just because we're not calling the police every night, we respect our police. Frankly, we want them up doing other things. Um, but we're not gonna call them every night. So what we're doing is going board by board, and as you know, I've been to your board, I've been to the Board of Health, I've been to the zoning board, and of course, it will escalate after that. So what we're asking for is very simple, that, that bylaw, which is under, you know, planning boards, right, is, is to take a look at whether KENS is really complying with that. They have neither enclosed bays, uh, or are controlling their nighttime operations. So in our opinion, that's not working with the neighbors, that's not even a good neighbor. So something has to give. And what we're requesting is, if they're not willing to enclose their bays, which we think is there to prevent nighttime noise, um, but they, they're not allowed to use, um, their operations overnight. Night is defined legally, however the board wants to define it, whether it's defined by the current noise by law that was passed, dawn to dusk, or, uh, Merriam-Webster. Dust to dawn, or Merriam-Webster, however you want to describe it. But we would ask that if you, uh, decide to prove, um, this application, that you would, um, prevent them from any more, uh, operations event. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And any other questions or comments from the public? If it's not something we've already covered, though, we've been on this almost two hours.
I understand.
Let me just see if anyone from the public, anyone else? Go ahead.
Uh, I was gonna ask if Deb has that list, and if it's signed by all those abutters, I'd like to get a copy, because we haven't heard from any of them. Uh, KENS actually gave their phone number to all those abutters to let them know when there were issues, so that Jim could react to it and find out where the noise is coming from. And we didn't really hear from too many, we only heard from two or three that were cooperative. So, you know, a lot of this, uh, seems to be, everybody's complaining, but nobody's here, and nobody's participating to help. We're hoping that those people will show up at the Board of Health and help us, you know, address this and look at it. Relative to enclosing the bays, uh, you know, that, that's, that's a non-stable way the thing is set up at this point, and, and we know that. You guys approved it without those bays on there, uh, twice now, uh, in seventeen and nineteen. And, you know, had KENS known they were gonna have to do it back then, they probably would have reassessed whether or not they would have spent that money and brought all this industry to the town. So I think to go back and try to say we can operate twenty-four seven when we have a zoning permit that authorizes that, you're gonna be going too far afraid. And I think to require our staff to build loading docks when they're not gonna even address the issue at hand, because those refrigeration units are on site on federal law to get, to take their stuff out of there. It's, it's, it's going the wrong way. It's going in the wrong direction. I would suggest that a condition similar to what I suggested is appropriate, and I'll leave it at that. I know you've got to move on, go on.
Thank you. Last, uh, chances, Mr., Mr. Knowles?
Oh, so Mr. and Mrs. Demaria, I'm just curious, um, you said that it sounded like, um, May of twenty-twenty-one was when you started going to different boards and everything. Like, was there a starting point that you really, like, if they, if KENS has been using this since two thousand fourteen, um, twenty-four seven, like they, I think that's what you said, right? Two thousand fourteen, twenty-four seven, from then on, um, has it been from that point on that you've heard the noise, or it's just recent?
August twenty nineteen.
August twenty-one.
Every neighbor in the neighborhood, they, I mean.
So I guess that is, KENS probably very likely with this, but if not, was there any significant change that happened in that timeframe with what was being either stored at that facility or, or like?
No, because the refrigeration was sitting there. We're not sure. I think what, what I heard was the complaint started in the winter of twenty nineteen, when the fall inches stopped.
It's ridiculous.
But my, I might suggest that there was a period of time when activity was lower prior to, during that period of two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, while the renovation was being done. Then there certainly would have been a noticeable spike, but not necessarily noticeable between prior to construction and post-construction.
You have the floor, Mr. Knowles.
Mr. Murray.
What just took him from our first meeting was when we were in the void, and that was March, um, twenty-twenty. It took us some time, because, um, it's time to get a meeting with her. That's the week, yeah, first conference.
Like?
And in fact, another day we're gonna need us to.
I'm, I'll, I'll get there, Chris. Jesse?
Yes, um, Mrs. Demaria, you, along the lines of what Mr. Pizzoni was asking, uh, because what occurred to Mr. Pizzoni also did occur to me, while you, you, uh, listed a number of addresses.
Yeah.
And in an email today you sent to the Board at two oh five P M.
Yeah.
You say numerous, approximately twenty residents?
Yeah.
Is, is, are those addresses, those approximately twenty residents that you referenced in the email?
Yes, so just to confirm, because this has happened over a couple of. Yes. So just to confirm, because this has happened over a couple of years now. The original complaint was made with ourselves to the Board of Health to to families. And then there were about six or eight at the zoning board appeals hearing back in May two thousand twenty one. And I've sent those names actually to Karina. And then and then Karina also offered to accept letters from the public, as you remember, as part of this hearing. So she maybe received about three or four at that time. And then Heather Elfer and the Board of Health asked to, you know, put together a small group, not comprehensive, because Kent's Foods didn't send out notes to everybody. But basically, those people sort of along our street. So we got maybe five or six people to join that day. But then more and more neighbors came out as they heard about that. And I gave them Heather's information, and she followed it with them. So my list is twenty one people, you know, all altogether.
Have documented their issues?
I don't have it, but Board of Health has it, or it's in the minutes of the zoning board, or it's in the police.
Okay. But you have not received that?
I've only seen what was given to the police. Lori and Lori, I've talked to, they were clear for that. And the few that have responded with Jim, I haven't seen anything from Board of Health of new people.
Okay. Thank you.
So I know I was in attendance at the CBA hearing for this special permit, which was last year. And there were many, many of others there. And I know from, you know, following developments through that affected me myself, that people drop off, you know, two, three, four years and nothing happens. You know, they give up, which is why we got calls to the police and the police said there's no noise by law. We can't do anything. People stopped calling the police. So because there, you know, aren't a hundred people here doesn't mean that it's not affecting them.
With all due respect, in several of those police reports, the police report that when they went out to the property, they didn't hear anything. And it was the same evening. So Kent's, if they were operating, they were operating all evening.
Well, so.
I'm also.
Marty?
Yeah, it's just a comment that I want to make. So I understand in two thousand nineteen, I think prior to me joining the board, we approved the the site plan modification. We moved operations to the west side of the building, which kind of makes sense if that's when the August nineteenth is when the noise started. So my only advice and perspective, we're obviously going to continue this on, and we have other people tonight. My thought is forensic analysis, like for you to look back what happened. Cisco in Boston, they put the mass largest food warehouse, they have a butters. What are they doing? What are people doing? And how do we invade? So if if there is this, you know, deadlock around our zoning, which I I still cover, but there's there's opportunity to be innovative, how do you explore the innovation and come to the board to offer mitigation? And that's what I want to push back to you just after you go through your board meetings with the Board of Health.
And this, hold on, Bill. We can't keep going back. Yes, Chris?
Chris Robinson, I'm going to say I'm impressed with two parts here. One, Kent's World Foods Corporation has decided several years ago, it's set up right. But we are grateful. It sets a milestone for the town. You guys make empty and Ken's came to the west end and used the plant and employed people and served the great Massachusetts area. So thank you, Kent's Foods. Thank you, Planning Board, for trying to get to the bottom of this noise issue. Now, I don't understand. People can give lots of excuses why they can't get people to show up for the complaints that have been made and why they can't get a group to work with Mr. Pizzoni to resolve and bring an agreement to this issue. In fact, my recommendation is somebody in this group should be appointed to point with the neighbors to set up a time that this is going to happen. You can't keep going on with this and bragging about and making everybody frustrated and giving Kent's a difficult time or the community a difficult situation. But I think if it was all, if we had somebody who's going to take the point position and get this group together, so something would happen.
I think that's happening on May twenty fourth, Chris, with a follow up on May thirty first. It's in motion now. We've made more progress.
Who's going to take responsibility? I'm just sending out a email to the group. But who's going to do the ball right here to get the people going?
I think it's our understanding that the Chair of the Board of Health is the lead. That's the person right now that has the ball.
Yeah, but you know, a lot of people get point positions, but it doesn't mean they have to get groups together.
There's there's two meetings scheduled, one on May twenty fourth and one on May thirty first. That's the most progress we've seen in quite a while.
But I applaud you guys, all of you, for trying so hard and bringing us a boost. So let's get into it.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mills?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We continue the public hearings for three twenty five Turnpike Road, Kent's Food Expansion, major site plan approval, and for three twenty five Turnpike Road, Kent's Food Expansion, permit for L I D to May twenty third, two thousand twenty two at seven oh five P M, respectfully, for both.
Second. Questions are made in second and any discussion. Do I ring that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Yes.
Stand, yes?
We'll see. Well, they'll see you on May twenty third.
You'll be dismissed, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
I'll start for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Questions are made in second and any discussion. Do I ring that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Yes.
Stand, yes?
What's a cold, what's a cold conference?
Don't figure that out. No.
So can a court have all these regulations on?
So if I look at a whole public plan.
Yeah. So it's they park in it. There wouldn't be most of it, but that's from.
So it is something structural. I'll look it up.
How many words we can start?
Go ahead.
Maybe. Planning Board's back in session. Let's start them on the agenda. There's a continued public hearing, two hundred Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility, major site plan approval, continued from November fifteenth, January tenth, January twenty fourth, February seventh, February twenty eighth, March fourteenth, April eleventh, April twenty fifth, and a continued public hearing for two hundred Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility, continued from the same dates for the lower impact development special permit public hearing. We'll ask the town plan, does she, you on there, Karina?
I am. I'm here.
Okay. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update on where we are with this public hearing.
All right. Since the last public hearing on April twenty fifth, on May second, we received personal review comments of their submission number three, which were distributed to all that needed. I also provided the applicant with some comments on the plans, myself, regarding planning board endorsement, signature, location, minor things like that. On, it's my understanding that on or about April twenty fifth, that the proponent applied with the Conservation Commission for Stormwater Management Permit and Notice of Intent, which is going to be heard at the May twelfth Conservation Commission meeting. I just want to point out that in the interim, I know there were a lot of meetings where the applicant team didn't attend as they were working on revising their submittal and being continued to tonight. I just want to point out that there were Board of Health comments back in February regarding septic plans required. You satisfied the Conservation Commission in their request for you to file a stormwater management permit and a notice of intent. There were comments regarding accessibility compliance that were provided. In addition, there were comments from Open Space Preservation Commission on April eleventh. And we did receive a letter from the D C R on April twelfth that they appreciated planning board's attention and the proponents' response. And essentially, they were all set as long as there were no significant changes to the layout. And that brings us to this evening. Person O'Neill's follow-up review did still have some remaining issues to which the applicant needs to address. And that takes us to tonight. I'll sit down.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Are you going to start? Attorney Norris, you going to start?
I will start.
Okay. Welcome back.
Always a pleasure to see you.
Pleasure as mine.
With me tonight is Mike Santoro, the engineer, John Prandell, the owner of the property. One of the issues that we had was from the abutist complaining about the trucks coming in and out of there. I've met with their attorney. We've met on site several different occasions. And we have reached an agreement that we'll be signing tomorrow morning. And we have reached an agreement that we'll be signing tomorrow morning to take care of all those issues. So they are no longer objecting, as far as I know, to what we're doing here. I think at this point, it would be easier for Mark to address you and address the issues in the Fussin O'Neill comments. And we'll try to go through and answer any other questions that you might have about it. And I'm wondering if we have a plan.
Well, when you take us through those items, they're open items, they're not going to get closed tonight.
No, we understand that.
Okay.
Understand that.
So why are we going to go through them?
Well, I think the, we were looking for some comments from the board on some of the proposed waivers that we have.
Okay.
And any other issues that the board might have that we can address so that after we finish with conservation and the Board of Health, when we come back here, we've got a completed package.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Thank you. First of all, it's great to be in person. Zoom is very convenient, but nothing beats a face-to-face tonight. Thank you for all this hearing and everything. My name's Mark Santora, I'm a design engineer from Grafton, Mass. I just want to point out one thing before I proceed. Karina pointed out that the Board of Health is looking for some, we did submit septic, full septic design and application package to the Board of Health a couple of weeks ago. We're pending reviews to review right now, some great noncomments from the Board of Health. I expect like any peer review, there's going to be a couple of things and we'll have to make a revision. We're confident that the septic design is something that we don't have any issues with because there's very good soils on the site and we have plenty of room, there's an existing septic system, it's a repair. Although we are upgrading, so we're treating it as new construction, but without getting into the details of Title V, we should be able to comply. And that feedback should happen within, before we close the hearing, we'd like to hear that from them. Same thing with the Conservation Commission, as Karina pointed out before the Commission later this week. And we'd like to open the hearing and assess a status with them and make sure that we don't have any major issues with conservation. The site itself, we're really, it's more of a stormwater permit issue. The site itself, we're only barely use a little sliver of buffer zone that we're going to impact. And the biggest issue in my opinion, and it's not an issue, but you know, our biggest item that we need to address satisfactory with the Conservation Commission is that there's the bordering land subject to flooding is a buffer zone in the flood plain, there's a 20-foot requirement, there's no work takes place in that buffer zone. And we do have a little bit of work proposed in that state bar, it's allowed. So we're going to be asking a waiver of the Conservation Commission. And if we get that waiver, then our footprint stays the same. If we don't get that waiver, we'll have to pull the wall in and the footprint will change a little bit. Melissa didn't seem to think it was a problem, but we need to go, you know, go through the process with the Conservation Commission and get that approved. So as far as the Fussin O'Neill comments, I like, you know, I'll work with Karina to get a a meeting over the phone with Fussin O'Neill to just talk about a couple of them. A couple of them, just, I just need to explain my design intent. Won't get into technical stuff because I don't think you want me to, but we can, we can address the technical comments in the Fussin O'Neill and intent too. But I didn't want to make revisions prior to this hearing because we've got a review pending with CONCON, which is overlapping. And we'd like to submit two sets of plans that are identical in a way. Back, one to planning, one to CONCON, wrap up our Fussin O'Neill comments. And one felt swoop rather than resubmit, submitting four times to you and three times to them. So, I understand. So really, what, the reason I, we wanted to even present tonight is to take, take the board's temperature if you would indulge us on the waiver request because if one of them could affect footprint. So if, and I understand you can't tell us how you're going to vote, but if you could tell us if you object or or give us some, but on, and then there's three of them, and Mr. Chairman would be our commission.
Okay, the first one is, so the first waiver request we're asking for is for, I'm going to summarize, the islands in the parking area, section 17413, the zoning bylaw requires islands spaced within parking areas. And in my response to Fussin O'Neill, I, I, I guess, I don't want to assume what the bylaw was written for, but in my opinion, I think it, it applies more to like a parking lot where you're going to have big parking areas, cars pull up and park in the islands. And so this isn't, although we have parking on the plan to meet, to show that we can comply with the parking requirement, there'll be less of a need for the owner to use that for parking as more as the area that he's, he's proposing to develop is for a laydown area for his, for his, for his landscaping business, for, you know, the snowplows and the, the things that don't get stored inside a building. And it, you know, and we discussed it, discussed this at the first meeting. This is, John is a very meticulous landscape contractor and he's not proposing to come in and just fuck all junk trucks and make a mess. He's going to have a state-of-the-art operation, it's going to be organized and neat. And he's not looking to, to, you know, make a junk out of this, but he does need the laydown space to make it work. So by putting islands in that, in this, in that small area, it's going to divide it up and it's going to take away from, from the functionality of the site. So we're hoping that this is, this is okay. Those are contour lines, the thick lines, and that circle at 274 is a, is a, is a 274 contour that, 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 that flows. The water flows perpendicular to those lines and directs towards that double catch basin that the cursor is close to. And then everything else is underground. So it's basically an open, wide open area. And he needs it because the trucks are going to come in and he needs to be able to get tractor chutes into the, to the salt sheet. And they're going to be able to go in, dump in there, and then drive out and leave the site while navigating whatever stuff might be on the ground over there. And also, he needs to be able to have a front loader pulling in and out of that and take scoops of the material and load his trucks and dispatch them out. So that, it's important that he's got some open, open space there, so an island would really make it difficult to navigate. You know, I'll, I'll stop at that, and if there's any input, we would welcome it.
So the requirements for landscaped islands, no further than 60 feet from a parking space. No parking space can be more than 60. So have you figured out how many islands would be needed to comply with that?
I haven't, no, I, you know, looking at it, one, it, we, we wouldn't.
That's okay.
Yeah, well, I'm just envisioning what you're talking about as far as an operation.
Yes, sir.
And so you have a nice landscaped island, and you have mulch, you have a red maple tree there or some type of bush. And then next spring, the tree is snapped in half. The bushes have been rolled over 100 times. Barberries all busted because of the nature of the operation. I tend to agree with it, understood. It's different than the office building or store, a piece of coming and going. It's more just purely an automobile parking spaces. What you're proposing here involves big trucks, well, yes or more.
I'm going to agree with the listener. The one thing though, if we could take whatever that space would be for an island, move it to the perimeter of the property and use it for what Mr. Trell, I assume, has for native species, grasses, that is not going to become a snow storage area, so we know it's going to be sustainable. And if it's near, close to wetlands, if there are little turtles from a nest there or anything like that, it's going to be protected. So if we take that same type of area, whatever it was going to be, put it somewhere on the edge of the property, that would be then protected. Again, not snow storage or anything like that.
Well, what we did in that, in that note is we moved the wall in. We used to have the wall right on the floppy line, we moved it in 10 feet to comply with another one of the, the bylaws to have the 10-foot strip around. And now we would then, but the walls, it would be at a lower elevation, but we could put those native plants around the toe of that slope. Yeah, no, but that's, thank you for that input. And it would, that would work with the layout that we have now. And I think that, that's, that's, that's definitely something that we could, we could accommodate.
Mr. Stein?
I'm in agreement with the rest of the board.
This is the town.
And we're just talking about this one particular waiver.
Yeah, one of the.
At this time, yes.
Of course, I agree with the chair.
So it looks like you got the green light to not have to install the islands.
Okay, that's perfect, Corbin.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to the next, next request. My memory, and I just want to double check my notes here, but my memory, the other two are the section 311 and 312, the hydro, hydraulic budget and water balance and hydro geological assessment. I'd just like to remind the board, we did speak about the water budget, water balance at the first hearing that we presented on Zoom. We do, and I touched on it at that point. I want to point out that without doing the analysis, I can say it's intuitively obvious to me, and I'll explain that we will increase the water balance, not decrease it because in our stormwater management analysis, to comply with, with the stormwater infiltration requirement, we analyzed the site and the pre-development condition in a 210, 25, 100-year storm. And due to the very high, well-drained soils on the site, it's class A, type A soils. Those storms all infiltrate into the, into the site. So soils are double-edged sword. You want poor soils, you know, as a designer, to minimize the amount of mitigation you have to do in stormwater. You want poor soils pre-development because that gives you lots of runoff to, to increase the pre-development runoff. So that post-development, when you render it impervious, there's not as much, you don't, you've got some, something to balance against. But when it all goes into the ground and you have zero on pre-development, now you have to get zero post-development. So now on post-development condition, the good soils are great because they infiltrate rapidly. And we, and the visual analysis of the soils, it's, it's, it does qualify for the highest rate on raws. It's, it's real good sand, highly drained. And so without getting way into it, that we're infiltrating all the water. Nothing leaves the site except in, oh, you know, 100-year storm, in the worst case, you would get a little bit of, a little outfall. So that being said, we're not, all the water is getting injected back into the ground plus the water from the septic system. So it's an increase in the water balance. So to do all that, just to quantify that, to show you, it, it's, it's, it's just going to be working expensive. The client that is going to just be, obviously, it's a small site. We're not, we're not taking any water away because we're not, we're not discharging any stormwater. So I feel like that, that, that one is a, is an exercise, just to, to show you something that I could, I hope I explained well.
Go ahead, someone.
Have the boss ever been waived before?
We, we, we have, but probably should have it in front of me. What does Fussin O'Neill say regarding your request for the waiver?
They, they, basically, their answer was, is that the discretion of the planning board to approve what's under this waiver? And my, my response was to say, basically, in a paragraph, what I, what I explained in paragraphs that it's all being infiltrated and the septic, it's a small site and the septic system is adding, adding water from the, from the, from the water main into it, so we're actually increasing the water balance.
And how about the Conservation Commission?
Well, I don't, and I, and you raised a good point, I don't know if they have, if they have this in their list, because I don't, we're going to ask them for that waiver, but I have to do my homework to see if that.
You have, you have to prove to the Conservation Commission that the post-construction rate of runoff
Yes.
is
Yes.
less than, or
Yes, sir.
or equal to
That's correct.
the pre-construction.
That's correct. And I, and I can demonstrate that at CONCON, and I have in this.
I would suggest that if, and that's essentially what you're saying.
Yes.
So if, if, when you get to that point with the Conservation Commission, just like we did with the previous proponent here. And we could ask a conservation agent to give us her opinion after you present your calculations. And then the board can be guided by conservation's opinion relative to your statements about water balance.
And I just want to point one thing, you said you were speaking of runoff. This, I'm, I'm saying that there won't be any runoff, that our runoff is all infiltrating. So instead of having pre-imposed development runoff being compared, we're, we're basically not going to have runoff. It's going into the, into the ground, so that's, that's where injecting.
That's one piece of it. The other piece is groundwater recharging.
It's, and it is being, and that's where recharging it all into the ground.
Your calculations for that to show that.
Yeah, yes, sir, and they do.
And then Conservation, I think, looks at that and the contour, and they can guide the planning board.
Okay.
Just way.
Great.
So let's put those on hold, 311 and 312, right?
And 312 is a little different, but yeah, basically, 312 is the hydro geological assessment, which is basically mapping the groundwater and its direction of flow. And then on that, we would, I, and again, I don't see the need to jump in after you pay the expense to drill wells, see where the groundwater is, get, get its direction of flow, only to, to, to show the obvious that we have a hill like this. Groundwater follows the contour of the ground and it's, it's flowing down that hill and into the DCR's watershed. And now we're going to take the site that's like this and put retaining wall and make it like that. And that's all it's filled with, the groundwater is down here. So we're, we're going to raise the grade and we won't affect the groundwater because groundwater is so deep. If groundwater was a couple of feet and, and, and we were cutting and changing the whole, going into the groundwater table, then I, I see the majorly assessment. But we're filling on top of the site with groundwater is deep. And it's, it's intuitively obvious that the waters, the water table gradient is to the, to the watershed. And we did plot, I didn't ask for a waiver for groundwater controls. We did do test, we did test, physical test pits, found groundwater or lack thereof by refusal. And we called groundwater at the bottom of our test pits at 10 feet and we mapped that. So it might be even lower, but we demonstrated that the water table is not being affected by our work. I just, again, the assessment, all that's going to do is have us drill, leave the deep, maybe we'll drill 20 feet to find the water table and then show that, oh, our work is above it, we're not going, we're not going to impact it.
What's the board's plan? Same as 311?
Yes.
And I, and I, I'm going to break my own rule, usually when the board is saying things are good, I'm supposed to shut up. I'm just going to say one more thing. This site is very small, it's microcosm of neighborhood. Like if we had acres, you know, and now the hydraulic, hydro geological assessment. you know, and now the hydraulic, hydro geological assessment is, is going to, with undulating grades, water table, different soils, then, then there's something to study. But this is a tiny spot, all the same soils, same grades.
That's just the opposite of what the previous group said, that their site was so new. So why don't we put while we're ahead?
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I don't want to hurt anyone, I'm going to stick with my, my.
Three eleven, three twelve.
Thank you.
We'll have the town planner monitor that discussion with conservation, get, ask them for an opinion, and then share that with the planning board for a final
Thank you.
resolution of the request.
And, and you know, and I, and I do, I, I hope you grant off three waivers, but really, the first one affects our, our footprint. So the other two, it's just going to be work that they would have to do after, that would affect their timeline, but I
We already got the green light on the first one.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Is that it for tonight? Questions or comments?
Other things not related to boards?
Yes.
Yep.
With the long list, should I start now?
Sure, let's, let's
Go right ahead.
So we can make progress.
Yeah, time's good, yeah. I apologize.
So questions from the previous hearing? So, we're required in the site plan to make sure that the site plan applies with zoning. And this site does not comply with zoning, it doesn't have the required frontage? Were you going to seek relief from the zoning board on that?
This site has frontage.
It doesn't have the required frontage today.
It's much smaller.
It's an expansion to a non-performing lot, which requires a special permit from the zoning board. And the building inspector, way back before you saw, so you went to the zoning board for the use. We were granting a special permit for that, and the building inspector had a time that we needed relief from this section and and approval of the use, and you only saw one.
Go to the facilities plan, it'll show the table she's referring to. One, one, sorry to interrupt you. One of the plans has a table on it that shows the zoning, either the cover sheet, let's start with the cover sheet. Down in the bottom. Oh, upper right-hand corner. So she is correct, that the required frontage is two hundred, and we have, I, I don't have, listen, we have a hundred and something, so it is less than the required frontage. But, and, and, and I don't want to disagree with you, I, I respectfully, the lot my, my opinion of that is that if we were subdividing this lot or changing its
The pre-existing.
Is a pre-existing non-performing lot.
Well, our bylaw states any expansion
Okay, no, and
to a non-performing lot.
Yeah. And, and zoning, I, I understand your position, and it's only is it's not a science. So, and, you know, if, they're saying we have to go to the ZBA, again, we were at the ZBA. And they, they moved the, they saw what we had here, they moved the
Well, you asked them to approve you.
I understand, we didn't ask, we didn't ask for this, but we did have a we had a hearing, we had a, not a hearing, I'm sorry, we had a meeting with the staff and the zoning enforcement officer, the line inspector was there. We asked, the guy in some way, she thought
She wrote that in her letter. She wrote the, you need relief on the use, and you need
In the very beginning, she, she directed this.
Right, so before you went to the ZBA the first time, she had equipped you with that guidance, which for whatever reason.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see that.
So also, at a prior meeting, I had asked if you would identify any trees on the site, there were six caliper more. You said you would, I don't see that on the
When I, when I was out there surveying, there's a lot of brush, I will go back and, and, and just take a note. Go there and GPS and shoot, I mean, my plan is getting busy, can I give you a list of them? I, I hate to be adding trees to the planet, it's really you want to see them on the plan, or, or, or
Well, it's required in the site.
Six inches of it.
And there's a twenty-foot landscape buffer that's required along the boundary of any residential senior property.
Can we, can we see that then? So, the only residents, the, the town is wrapping us here. The petroleum processing, that's business on, to the left, is a, is a farmhouse on Middle Road, and we're not
Well, the town, the town is, that parcel is residentially zoned.
And we're not, and you're, we're twenty-foot buffer, we're not, our work, there's a buffer still there. The work ends at the detention farm, and, I mean, we don't have a
So what's in that landscape buffer, grass?
Can we go to a sheet? Go to the next sheet. So you know, with all due respect, you want us to put screening between us and the DPW garage? I mean, we
That's what they
Maybe we should ask for a waiver for that, then, is that, if, instruct compliance, go ahead.
Well, it's residentially zoned, it's a DPW garage now. It's something different in the future.
I don't, I don't, I mean, that's a stretch, that's there, that's there, it's, that's a facility, I can't see them, I mean
Things change.
Mimi, which border are you referring to? The east or the south?
Um, the south up the east there.
Southeast corner? I can't see it from here, the right side? Or the bottom?
And, yes, both.
Both, okay.
Um, but even, so a ten-foot landscape buffer is required, but grass isn't a landscape buffer. It doesn't provide.
There, there's, there's trees there, there's heavy
But I don't know that, because
See, no.
Well, there's a squirrely, but I don't know if that, what that means.
See that, see that, that, that's, I mean, it's heavy cover, I mean, you can't even, it's, it's
Well, so you can use existing screening, but I need to know what it is.
So I basically got to label it as such, it, it's, it is, it is screened pretty well, I'm not trying to carry many minutes. You can't see through there, I can't climb through there, I couldn't survey it, it's, it's not
Mark, do you have a legend on the plans?
Yes, it's in the front cover.
Thanks.
And do you know what that black dotted line down there is? Yeah. There's a one up in the top, too.
Oh, the one on the top is the, is the FEMA floodplain. Um, that's, that's an errant line, I have to move that. Yeah, that line is not, that's All right, so, I'll assess that for, just, just determine if it's would pass the muster for, for landscape screening, and I, I can label it, if I think it is, and you can check it.
And what low-intact development techniques are being utilized?
Well, that, where it says proposed grass, we're going to be creating a rain garden there, and an extra vision. Yeah, and then we're using we've got, we've got a buffer on the outside, and we're using a stormwater treatment unit, infiltration systems, dealing with the hot spot through containment of the salt. So basically, the rain garden is the main, is the main, main lid.
You have undisturbed open space listed on the plan?
Yes, and then, on our left, well, really, it's just a sliver, that's our lot, that's, that's, that's what creates the front.
Right, that goes up to Middle Road there, but that's moed, do you plan to stop moed?
We don't touch that, that's, that's
So we, so we have a definition of open space in our code, so is that going to be deeded as open space? Not to be touched in perpetuity?
I mean, we wouldn't, I don't think we could deed it to anybody, but you want a conservation restriction on it?
No, just
That's what that, that is, right?
A conservation restriction isn't required, just
In my, my, in my mind, when you deed it, like, if you, like, like and last thing, I'm trying, I'm trying to get that, I'm just trying to understand what you're asking me. So when, if I do an open space plan, and you have, you know, flexible development or open space development, and you have two, two types of you know, conventional, and you're assessing the two, and, and open space on one of the plans where you've given requirement laxness, that open space then gets restricted permanently as open space, and the disposition of that open space can either go to conservation, be deeded down, or a conservation restriction posted on it, that can only be undone by the legislature. That, that's, to me, what a conservation restriction is. Now, open space, I mean, the definition of open space, to me, is space that we don't plan on using, and it's not in this proposal not being changed. So I, I know you, you have a definition in the bylaw, you can, you can tell me and read it, and hopefully we meets that, and yeah, I just labeled it, fine, it's
Mark, this is Karina. You should check the code for open space, there's a, that definition. What happens is on some of these site plans, in order to help mitigate with lid tech, you know, with lid approaches, sometimes the planning board likes to see some open space that's restricted, and what happens is if there's a paragraph that's get added, that gets added to the plan that says, this particular area, and it gets marked with bounds, won't be moed, or can be moed twice a year, but it's, if the goal is to preserve it in its natural state.
I, I don't, I, I don't think, and I, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's a problem. We could, we could designate that as, as place that we would meet the bylaw, and we, and we don't have any plans for it. And it, and it was, that's not gonna
Could I issue this, Mr. Chair? Anything that's, that, that figure goes all the way up to the, to Middle Road, and to the, you know, border of turnpike. For me, I don't, I don't mind, I mean, it'll save us some maintenance, but there's probably one section of it that we want to keep moed, just for site obstruction, for anyone coming in and out of that property. But other than that, it's defined to me, designated as open space in that term. And the, as far as the, the landscape that's above the transfer station, I don't know what that's, twelve to twenty-foot-high dock American abracadiu set run a whole length. So that's, that's like, you can't get a better living sense than that. The other side is Pinamoke and Naples and whatnot, I'm not sure how much that's going to be developed, Mark, but again, I, you know, it's what we do, so we could put abracadiu or something to that effect.
No, if there are trees currently there, those can be used to satisfy that state.
Sure, you're drawing my number, yeah, there's, there's a stand of trees on that back line.
So I don't know that, I don't know that that would comply with the landscape.
We need to show it on the
So I just need to know that.
Okay. So on the open space, what John is referring to is on Middle Road, he's got to keep a line of sight to the driveway. But other than that, we can, the rest of those two areas that I have labeled as undisturbed open space, we could you, you could restrict it for future use, and you'd be okay with that. You can mark the plan, just show where it's been Basically, just the sight line, you know, where a driver was. When, when you come out the driveway, you could, you know, drivers could be able to look both ways, and so the person, you understand, so it's the first twenty feet we want to have. But other than that, we we'll, we'll show it. And, and thank you, I, I think, I'm starting to understand, you're trying to help us, that, that, that's open space, that helps with the lid, to, to, for that to be, so thank you, we, we do.
There is a section that, that area that's been moed from the prior order of the petroleum processing. We haven't mowed it ourselves, but, you know, we could certainly talk to the neighbors as well, we both share the responsibility of that, so.
The trees are listed as too much caliper, but they're required to be tree in the
On the landscape plan?
And there are two, the honey locusts and it's going to be shocking, the yurki and you are non-named.
On my latest one, I changed some stuff. Let's look at what she's got, yeah, it, I'm pulling up in the upper left-hand corner of this plan.
Yeah, so that's the one, one locust in European.
So swap those for native.
And there is an, an American.
The problem suggests it may be a moot point, but it's a, it's a really resilient tree, so in the area we have one pavement and whatnot, they stand really well. But, um, certainly do whatever's needed, and just try to find something.
And also on the plan and the species selection guidelines, it should be a note that the species shown on the plan shall be planted as approved on the plan, and any change shall be approved by the town.
Oh, oh, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up with this list, I didn't have a good piece of paper. Six inch caliper. Can you restate that, please? What was that?
The, the landscape should be planted according to the plan, and any changes need to be approved.
Right, yeah, I, I, someone made, I mean, Karina, so I have it by the engineers, who want me to see the engineer and planner.
Is there lighting per few times, or is it going to be up to one percent?
During, during the summer, we go hours, night, winter, winter operations, you will need lighting in, in in and around the facility, but the lighting plan shows no spill over of the property, and
So it's going to be like twenty-four percent?
Only, when it's, only in the snow event, only if he's actually working, and, and that's going to be based on weather.
Oh, what kind of tones are we taking from?
It's labeled on the grading and drainage sheet, the top and toe of wall, see if we can get one of those sheets, but to just answer you, it ranges from eight to fourteen feet, two seventy-eight, eighteen feet is its highest point.
And what's that made of?
Large, large gravity rock, blocks, so it's going to be a, an engineered wall that has geotextile fabric and, and bucks part of the size of this table. geotextile fabric and 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 blocks part of the size of this table. Just that 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 the the first couple courses will be on the bottom. There'll be a block coming along ways, a dead man. And then the next course will step back like this to to that the wall can't lean. And 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 it is.
I'm just wondering what it's going to look like because now it's like the trees, because there's all the DCR there, then there's like a meadow. But all of that meadow is going to be gone and there's going to be this.
It's it's going to have a facade. The blocks will have, they won't be he's not going to put bin blocks in that that like you just have concrete. They're going to have let me let me try to give you an example. Wait.
Are these waste blocks? Mark, Mark, are these waste blocks?
Yeah, but they're but they're not waste blocks port square. They they're waste blocks with a form that are going to have have.
Print, a texture?
A print texture, correct. Put it on a detail with plan. I I think we might have it on one of the sheets. Look at the detail sheets. And no to the left on one of these.
It's on page nine.
Thank you. All the way to the left. This doesn't show the face, though, so we'll have to show you the face of it. Yeah. We could get a brochure and bring your picture, show you. It'd be nice, though. It's not going to be out of the way.
This is the one. Open it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Gentlemen, do you think we made some progress tonight?
I think we made a lot of progress. We appreciate your help.
Sounds like you've made progress, too, especially with the neighbor.
Yeah.
That was way a long time ago. That was the first.
Yeah, and DCR, that was great.
DCR. So you've got some homework assignments, got the corrections that Fussin O'Neil has pointed out that need to be fixed on the plan. We picked up another one of those dash lines. Colleen, did you have something?
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. This is Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We had a couple of comments and I'm not sure if you totally addressed them all tonight. But one concern is the the grass planting. If my calculations were right, reading the plant, the landscape plan, you have like 25,000 square feet planted in grass. Has that been changed or is that is I correct in that calculation? Because it doesn't seem like it's a property that needs grass lawn.
So through the chair, to answer you, Freddie, this is Mark Santora. We I I I first of all, we didn't forget you. I meant to get ahold of you, but I wanted to go to the Conservation Commission first and talk to them and then come back to you and and address your your questions after after Wednesday. But the 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 graph, that calculation, you're right on the area, but we're not modifying that. That's the it's to remain natural the way it is now. So whatever however many that land is now is the way it we we intend it to remain.
So that's not new seeding?
No.
Okay, then I might have misread it. The the other question is about the and I know you just went over this, but the open space designation. And one concern is you're talking about leaving it undisturbed except for mowing for the view site. We may want to have a conversation before you come back to come up with a somewhat of a better plan. I I really worried in this day and age of leaving landscape to go wild, what you end up with most of the time is a messy invasive species, not really good habitat. So one of the things we we recommend, let me just finish. We recommend maybe is the planting and with an annual mow that can keep it under control, but we could come up with maybe if your goal is to leave it undisturbed, except for where you need to mow for view site, and that's a lid technique, we may want to recommend a certain type of planting to be put in there so that you can have a deep, you know, nice looking entrance that when I say nice, I mean a natural habitat that's not just overgrown with bittersweet and all other kinds of invasive species. And then the third thing we'd want to talk to you about is you're saying you're putting in a rain garden. We'd love to recommend some plants that are native and also
Thank you.
Some of the highest value types of plants. If that's okay, we'd try to set up a meeting.
We welcome that. And I just on your point of the on the open space, I I just because it was out of the impact area of the site, I didn't map it as as well as I probably should have, but a good portion of that is flood plain. And there's also wetlands there. That's a lot of it. We can't touch or maintain. And I understand the invasive species. And that's why I wanted to talk to Concom. And if you want us to, you know, remove invasive species in some of those areas, first, we've got to address it, assess it, and that and then you're more of an expert on that than I am, but I, you know, I I just want to point out there's some wetland areas that that limit our ability to 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 maintain that.
And if I may, through the chair, respond. Our goal is to, I'm not asking you to create a management area. I'm just throwing out there that if you leave it alone and don't have a plan for it, that you can end up with something you weren't expecting. And I didn't notice that some of that area that you listed as open space was wetland. So that's another issue.
And just to that, I I when I go back to the site to look at this for the six inch caliptries, I I'll I'll look at those areas and 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 look for invasive species and look at what what we can manage and what we can't. And then we we can answer you better next time we talk. Maybe we can touch base with you for those plants in the in the rain garden and we can have that discussion out out of out of the meeting.
Thank you. Our our goal is to be helpful, not to add to your plate as far as.
And and that is helpful, but the the plants in the rain garden is we we welcome that that guidance.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, one more thing. I just want to say, you know, I'm here. I started my company on easy math, 16 to 500 bucks and never thought I'd ask what we are. All in those years and their casting conditions and all our clients at this point are commercial. So we work for the hospitals and current coffee, a lot of those type of institutions. And they've asked us to come into this area as well. So I'm very grateful to just just be here. I know it's going to take a little bit more effort, but I think we'll we'll get there. So appreciate everybody's help with this.
Thank you. Yeah, this is this public hearing and the one before it are just extreme outliers as far as continuing issues. To start this, these hearings back, these started in November. And to still have them open here in May is incredible. It's just.
I got I got sick. I apologize. I had.
There's other, there's other, there's other reasons, but we I think the board could see that there's some obstacles, some challenges that you had, but seemed to feel that you were all headed in the right direction. And so these continuations went on and on. And like you said, hopefully we'll have a nice happy end.
Thank you. And 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 I do want to point out, I understand I'm one man and I don't have the office of 20 years. So it's tough to some of these comments. It's a lot of work and I I won't claim that we we broke any time records, but I'm not looking to skip any steps. So we'll get through it.
Do it right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you.
That's correct. That's a reference to the chairman's one of his famous quotes over time was from, we're going to do it right. How long it's going to take.
I agree, yes. We've done it and we'll do it again.
Yeah. So if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to continue the hearings.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We continue the public hearing for 200 Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility, major site plan approval and also 200 Turnpike Road, snow removal landscaping contractor facility, special permit for LID to May 23, 2022 at 7:10 PM.
Second. Most is invading second in any discussion. Karina, are you all set with this?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Here now, in the war, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Okay, we'll see see you on 23rd. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public continued public hearing. 154, 156 North Row Road, modification to major site plan approval. This is continued from March 14, April 11 and April 25. We'll ask the town planner to update us on this public hearing.
Okay, I was just looking at my notes here. All right, a couple of things. Since the last public hearing on April 25, I received a call from a resident who is interested in purchasing some of the units and he had questions about the project and the status and Mike was looking to get ahold of you and he said he was waiting to hear back from you just to let you know. I also received a call from Roger Kane, the owner of the property. He was going to submit a letter to me, Mike, before this meeting in order to explain or clarify or make a request. I hadn't received anything since that phone call. On April 27 or prior to that, as you know, the ASBILTS were reviewed by Fussin O'Neil and Peter Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants had provided the ASBILTS and a certifying engineered letter, an engineered certified engineered letter certifying the ASBILTS in which they discussed the stormwater cals were sufficient showing, you know, that the that the drainage ASBILTS was adequate. And we have requested stormwater cals to be provided so that Fussin O'Neil can review those calculations to confirm that statement in the certifying letter with the ASBILTS. I spoke with the building commissioner about the status of this project and it's at this time, and this was on just the end of last week, that it's her understanding that at this time she is not in a position to issue certificates of occupancy for the project because of some safety related issues that need to be completed for the building permit applications. And it's my understanding that Peter Bemis has been communicating with the building department on that, but at this point that it was not ready for certificates of occupancy. In addition, on May 5, that was last Thursday, I received a call from Attorney David Officer who was looking to set up a meeting with me to determine and discuss the outstanding items for this project. I believe David Officer was in attendance at two planning board meetings ago, along with you, Mike, in which we described five aspects that were to be addressed during the period going up to the next meeting. And those involved issues with the building department and the permits related to getting those permits, the condo docs that were supposed to be updated based on town council's review. The protocol for new occupants, which you had revised, and we had two additional revisions. We were waiting for an updated copy of that. It's our understanding that and as you were aware, some of the drainage wasn't built to site plan compliance. And that in turn led to the request for the stormwater cals to be provided. Fussin O'Neil also reviewed the civil aspects, the civil site design aspects of the ASBILTS and they issued a review letter with several items that I believe you were going to contact me in the interim timeframe between the prior meeting and now to discuss how you're going to resolve those. And then there's the issue of the landscaping, that there was still some plantings that you were going to complete so that Fussin O'Neil could complete their ASBILTS review of the landscape aspects. And I haven't really heard from you, Mike, since the last meeting, so I don't have anything new other than that we are seeking the stormwater cals so that we can provide them to the town consultant to at least work on that step for the ASBILTS, which is a requirement of the original site plan approval. And that brings us to this evening. Don, that's all I have to get us up to date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm Michael Quinn, representing Kane Built Inc. This evening I have a letter I can give to Colleen. We'd like to withdraw our application for modification and would like to do that with a this evening.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, yes. And so that takes the condominium documents off the table. We would like to concentrate on getting the building inspectors cleared away, the landscaping and the other engineering issues.
Does this mean you won't be doing ownership units? Are you reverting to?
Not a percent. We just want to get the building. We want to get the certificate of occupancy issued as soon as possible. And that's what we're going to concentrate on.
The letter. Can you read that to us?
Sure. Your planning board, Lee Kane Built Inc. hereby request to withdraw to withdraw the application for modification without prejudice, probably known as 156 North Row Road itself. Signed Roger Kane and Michael Quinn.
Pretty simple letter.
That's what we like.
Open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
No, no questions.
Any questions from the public?
I see no hands.
Okay, we'll accept that letter and take action on that if the board would like tonight. The thank you, the the current decision dates or North Row Road is May 27. Which is after the next planning board meeting. It would seem that in the absence of a good reason for it to take action on this letter tonight or let town council look at it and take action on it on May 23. I don't, I can't think of a reason something that's out there that we don't understand or need to take action on in another way. This this would basically cause the board to entertain a motion to grant your withdrawal of the application without prejudice. And if that carries, then goes away. And and your fees are kept by the town.
Don, do we?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Do we need to have something for the file that indicates?
Can I ask a question? Do we need to have something for the file that indicates that they're not that they're retaining the rental approach versus the, or does, is that just come because the permits they have in place refer to rental, therefore defaults to that?
It would default to that.
Okay.
It's what they have now.
Right.
Whole exercise was to change it. Now they're asking to keep it the way it is by withdrawing their application to change it.
Just for point of clarification, we close the public hearing first and then accept the withdrawal.
Yeah, that would sound right. So any other questions?
I have one more question, Don. So I have a meeting scheduled tentatively tomorrow with Attorney David Officer at one thirty. Mike, do you know if he still wants to pursue that meeting?
I don't know. I can call you first thing in the morning and let you know.
Okay, because it involves not only me, but the conservation agent and the building commissioner? So that we can just make sure we're not waiting. Thank you. Thanks, Don, sorry.
So if your attorney wants to still have the meeting, he's probably not going to want to do it for free.
Probably not.
So if he's not aware of this letter.
He's aware. I spoke with him this evening.
Okay, so it's just a matter of canceling the meeting. There's no purpose for the meeting.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. So we'll enter to anything else from the public? Anybody? Mr. Mills?
Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for one fifty-four, one fifty-six North Row Road, modification of a major site plan approval.
Second, most has been made in second in any discussion.
Is that without prejudice, correct?
We're closing the public hearing.
Without prejudice?
I don't know why I close one with prejudice, but.
Okay, you're right. I'm sorry. I just didn't want to forget.
Any more discussion? Hearing now all in favor of Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept Kane Built Inc.'s request to withdraw their application for modification without prejudice, as requested by Roger Kane and Michael Quinn May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, most has been made in second in any discussion. Anyone hearing now all in favor of Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry I waited so long.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an approval not required, two hundred and fifty Turnpike Road. Let the town planner to introduce this and take a thought.
So the entity that owns two hundred and fifty Turnpike FD, two fifty Turnpike LLC, managed by David Ferris, submitted an A and R application that we filed on May third. And we provided the plans to the planning board for review. In the audience, I believe we have Brian Shavill, if I'm not mistaken. He is representing the applicant, and maybe you can. Here he is. So the planning department reviewed this A and R. They made several revisions per request. We reviewed everything, and it all appears to be in order. Essentially, it's one lot at two fifty Turnpike that has a split zone. There's an industrial zone that fronts on Turnpike Road Route nine with a residential A zoning district to the rear of the lot. And I'm just trying to see it. It's so small. I will let Brian Shavill explain further if that's all right with you, Don.
Yes.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me? Great. I'm Brian Charval. I'm the general counsel of Ferris Development Group. The property owner at two fifty Turnpike is an affiliate of ours. This is a nine point eight-three acre parcel today, known as Lot Two A. And with this plan, it would be divided into two new lots, Lot A and Lot B. Lot A would be on the Turnpike roadside, the northern half, if you will, of the lot, about four and a third acres. And Lot B would be the southern portion, about five and a half acres. The new dividing line essentially follows, for the most part, the existing low zone line between the industrials and the long Turnpike and Residence A to the south. Lot A today contains an existing office building and a couple of parking lots, and Lot B is undeveloped. You see in the plan, there's a zoning table which reflects compliance in terms of frontage. New Lot A has its frontage on Turnpike Road Route nine, and Lot B has its frontage on Parkerville Road. Ms. Quinn said that the plan's in order, and we want to take this opportunity to thank her and her colleagues for their input on this. I think what you're seeing tonight is the fourth or fifth iteration of a plan, and so it really benefited from their feedback before we formally filed. That being said, I haven't answered any questions, and otherwise we ask that the board endorse the plan as approval not required. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll open it up to the board. Mrs. Hulahan?
My only question is, Parkerville is a scenic road, and it has a historic stone wall at the point of frontage. So how does this impact an A and R? And Karina, I think that question might go to you.
Sure, in corresponding with the representatives for this A and R, we had them specifically put Scenic Road on the Parkerville Road label so that it would stand out later to the building commissioner when they go for a building permit. But also, they have been informed that because there's a stone wall there, it's a scenic road, that if they impact that stone wall, they would need to come to the planning board for a scenic road, stone wall, and tree removal permit.
Okay, and I understand it's an A and R, so approval's not required, but my only question is having, you know, I drive by this all the time. That stone wall is pretty continuous. So it would require to remove a stone wall that's a scenic on a scenic road to actually make the lot usable. It's just a threshold that's high. I'm just making it out of no. Thank you.
Yeah, also, if you notice, if the plan is accurate, we surveyed for that stone wall. There is a stretch of approximately what could scale to maybe thirty feet or so of a gap in the stone wall, just about in the center of that frontage of Parkerville. So there could be opportunity there if they lay it out properly.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mrs. Luttrell?
My only question is, there's a lot of wetlands in the frontage there. Where do you envision the access?
Well, aside from complying with the scenic road by law, I think the access could be anywhere. So my client hasn't determined yet where the access will fall on Parkerville.
But you contend you have it even though there's a lot of wetlands, like you can't track the waters?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Stein, no questions. Mr. Mills, no question. Anyone from the public, neighbors, anybody? No?
No question, no hands raised.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
Chairman, I make a motion that we endorse, endorse him, right?
Yep.
The endorse the A and R for two fifty Turnpike Road as requested by the applicant.
Second, most has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor of Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Shavel.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion item ninety-six Mount Vicar Road subdivision extension request. We'll ask the town planner to update us on where we are with this.
Okay, let me just, oh, I'll just speak of that. And Colleen, you can step in at any time. Colleen's been kind of handling the correspondence on this. So at the last planning board meeting, I believe the planning board asked the planning department to ask town council on the pros and cons, so to speak, of a law granting an extension this far in advance of the expiration dates for the definitive subdivision and the covenant that goes along with it, which expires next April and June. Town meeting town meeting was last week, and I know that town council was very busy, but we did provide a request to town council in that regard, and I believe Colleen followed up again this afternoon with an email, so we haven't heard back yet. So we're still waiting on that. If, if Mike or Jack Bartolini reach out to us, soon as we hear feedback from town council, we'll, we'll let them know so they can plan accordingly, perhaps for the next planning board meeting.
I think we have Michael here behind the mask.
Yeah.
Was that all, Karina?
Yeah, unless Colleen has something to add, unless she received an email from town council later today.
You're saying we've received nothing yet?
We have not received anything.
Has the board's opinion relative to waiting for town council's advice changed? The difference, I guess, would be to not wait for it, even though we asked him for it, take action tonight, or wait, and our next meeting is May twenty-third. So what's the pleasure of the board? Wait or act tonight? Or discuss it tonight?
The only, the only issue I have is if we're going to set a precedent. I appreciate Mike coming in early, telling us, hey, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get this done because of supply chain issues and everything. So I don't envision myself holding up saying, no, we're not, I'm not going to go in favor of the extension, knowing what his challenges is as a builder and the current state of the supply chain. But from a precedent standpoint, I see the conundrum that we're putting. So that helps him like that. Like, we've got to come to a couple more meetings just so we can make sure that we don't put ourselves in a bind in the future.
Anyone else? I kind of feel like the opponent addressed the reasoning. So I'm not sure. I mean, I guess I do have to defer to town council, but I don't really think personally that it sets a precedent. I think these are extraordinary conditions. So given that we're in unprecedented times in terms of supply chain and labor issues, I personally don't feel it sets a precedent, so I will be okay with that this evening. Yeah, it seemed like the board was not, or was okay with the reasons. The issue was the timing. Timing of granting an extension. That's a fair point, so. So far in advance of meeting. So I can't say for sure legally that it does set precedent, so I guess in that way I'm agreeing with Mr. Mills. Yeah, it, I think so far we're reinforcing what we said before, which is, you know, the supply chain issues are driving this. Mrs. Luttrell?
Yeah, I understand, and my apologies to you.
Okay, let's kind of zoom, but I figure I should be there for something.
But I agree with all the reasoning, but I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know if there's something, somebody's in town council say it's not a good idea to grant so early.
Mrs. Hulahan? Okay, so there'll be no action tonight, Michael?
Great. It doesn't, still can't get the type, so it doesn't change anything on my end.
Yeah.
But yeah, so I guess I'll just contact Colleen and make sure ahead of time next time.
Very good. I'll say.
Sure. Right.
I saw your grandmother today. She looked wonderful.
Oh, thank you. She's doing pretty good. She's excited. We got first meeting next week, so, or Saturday, Saturday, actually, so.
So does that mean there'll be a million cars at the house stuff?
No, got to keep it small. Can't, can't do anything too big still, so, especially with Ferris, ninety-six, so.
It's one of the few probably grandmothers who can look out the window on Mother's Day and see a Pontiac GTO convertible rumbling through the yard.
Yep.
That's the body.
That's, that's actually my mom's. No, I just want to say thank you for your service and your time, too, so. For your body, she'd always be here for that, so.
Thanks very much. Thank you. You remember that, you guys, you have the world's fastest it was a one-house subdivision?
Yeah, Maple Street.
Maple Street extension. Yeah, one night, in and out, in like, what, twenty minutes?
Pretty quick.
That was how long?
That was, I was twenty-six, so that was forty-two now, so sixteen, sixteen years ago. So, yeah.
She's forty-two.
Yeah.
So he was one when you started serving him.
One. No wonder when your father would come into the meetings, you'd look so tired.
I think he used to bring me to the meetings. I think I was like ten when I started coming here.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your kind words, for being here.
Yeah, well, you put a lot of time in. You deserve it, so, thank you.
Treat the board well in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA communities. Karina?
All right, just quickly, with Colleen's assistance, the select board was able to submit the information form by the May, prior to the May second deadline, in order for the town to have interim compliance with MBTA communities. So we're awaiting how the process will proceed. And that's about it.
Anything, Colleen?
No, the lawyers are getting involved, so it really needs some.
Okay. Anybody else on MBTA communities discussion?
Nope, there are two attendees in the Zoom waiting room, but no questions.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board?
No, no, no. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation, we take, if there's any comments from the public first on if there's for a discussion item farewell tribute to everlasting Chair Don Morris. Is there any hands raised from the public?
No, not at this time.
They're all asleep.
Anyone here in the room, part of the public or the selectmen that would like to say anything?
Speaking unofficially, I would like to bring that for his longtime service.
And could you state your name, please?
I'm trying to be talking to Sam, Sam, seven president. Apparently long history, but almost half the time he served, but the we've not always agreed, but I've always respected his dedication to the town and his diligent service and toward the farm volunteers that are so committed, diligent, dedicated, and kind of benefited from it, and I certainly appreciate it, I really appreciate it. Thank you, and
Thank you, Sam, very much. Him and I were on the Zach, was it six years?
Seemed like sixty. Not that many T-shirts, like we survived.
And most of the time, the vote was six to one. And one was Sam. But once in a while, it would be five to two, and it would be Sam and I. And the room would have this, like, uncomfortable.
Be shocked.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it, but that, that was something. And then, of course, all the boards you've served on, and, you know, we all interact, so, you know, your, your your treatment, you and, and the selectmen, you know, we interact, try to work together, pull in the same direction, try to do what's best for the town. That's certainly there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to be here for the final battle strike.
With the new one, the final strike could be the new one.
Maybe the only reason you had both the old.
Yeah, if you act up, Sam, I can hit, hit it and call you out of order.
All time.
But I never did it, no, no.
So I don't know, Karina and Colleen, I don't know if you guys want to say anything, then.
I have some, oh, yes, I have something to say very briefly, which is unusual for my long sentences. I've known Don now for five and a half years, and I just want to say that he is a great person to work with, he's been a fabulous mentor to me. As you know, I came from engineering and transitioned to planner, so there was a learning curve there, but around every corner, Don provided me with guidance and advice and encouragement and boosting my confidence. Just all around, a great person to work with, and you're the best manager that I've ever had. And I have over thirty years of experience with many different managers. I appreciate everything you've done to help me. I hope that you come by the townhouse as often as you can to just touch base and maybe attend some of the meetings for the fun of it. But I'll miss you as my manager, I'm, I'm happy that the remaining members of the board are also great people to work with. So I'm not super afraid or anxious, and I'm looking forward to that, but generally, Don, thank you so much for all your help and your guidance. I, I can't say enough about it, but thank you.
Well, Karina, you know that I always thank you, you're so dedicated, and you and I speak engineering, so it's easy to communicate. And I don't think the planning office has ever been even close to this well managed, even though we've had some pretty good managers, pretty good town planners, but you're, you're at the top of, of the list for sure in managing the office, which at times is like a revolving door for any assistance that you needed. And I don't know, we haven't counted them for months, but many, many months, probably ended up over a year out of the five years where you had nobody. There's nobody there.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say that was the amount of time that I've called you on the phone.
Oh, maybe I got my notes mixed up. No, I, no, my, my wife will, you know, she, she won't see me in the house, and she'll look out in the backyard, and I'll be sitting there talking with you sometimes even in the winter, and, you know, she just, I don't know why, but she, you know, she'll say, who was that? And it's like, Karina. And everything okay? Always okay, everything's always okay. I will miss those phone calls a little bit. But I also, I also expect the phone calls from you, Colleen, and whoever the next chair lady is. You know, until, until, you know, forever, if you, I mean, we still, still call Hillary, don't you? So.
Absolutely, don't change your number.
No, no. Thank you for your kind words, thank you.
Oh, it's sincere.
So this agenda item is
Don't mind the bag, Don, this is a token of our appreciation as your planning board members. I
Did that come out of the budget?
This is right, for the record.
Can I open it?
It's a card, kind of give you the card first, this whole process.
A good guy. Goes right to the big stuff.
But I think that the sentiment is that I think you've taught all of us so much. I, I think I first experienced the planning board, I've got to remember in town for probably twenty years, and one of my first things I got to learn about was flatly, and I won't mention any more about that, but then I got very involved in town politics and particularly really understanding our planning involvement. You've taught me a lot as a chairman, Don, you have really opened my eyes on hearing and not necessarily jumping to any conclusions, listening to what opponents have, what our fellow board members have to say, really thinking about it, understanding how the town planner weighs in, and I've learned a lot over the period that I've served on board. I will miss you, it's been a really nice experience to learn from you, and I'm sorry we don't have five more years with you. But I know that you will be coming to planning board meetings just for the fun of it, and sharing some of your intellectual experience and institutional knowledge that you have gained over forty-one years here, that we probably will all need to seek out at some point, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, the way, your words, Marty, I, I believe you. Did you have learned through the whole process, not necessarily for me, but you've learned, and you're the newest member. So the way I feel about the rest of the planning board is the strongest I've ever felt, I think. It's leaving at this time is just making room for more improvement. Good, strong board, excellent people, and no no, no, not a mission, not a, no, no act to grind, just focusing on what's best for the town itself. So some paperwork here that says retirement is a time to look back with pride on achievements made, to remember with appreciation the many people and moments shared, and to celebrate the future with all its possibilities. Oh, look at this, I get all these notes today, and always your wish the very best life can bring in everything you do, congratulations, I'll read these notes, we're gonna have an admin session after this. Thank you, thank you very much. So if that's the end of
I, I just want to thank you, and I've learned so much. Stay available via phone. Thank the last you've heard from me.
Maybe you're like, next, you know, next, what's the term in the military, next man up, next you know, whatever. Retired. It's a huge difference, because you guys, you guys work all day long, every day, how you can do this, I mean, I did it, but and you wonder how you did it, but you do it, but being retired allows you to come in, it's, it's really a massive benefit, I think, to the town, the extra hours that you can
Don't talk her out of it.
You can donate, she's already doing it. So that status is a potential benefit to the town that most people don't know about, or maybe appreciate, I guess if they knew about it, they'd appreciate it more, but, you know, if you're not, you don't have to get up and go to work every day, then you could spend more time on this stuff and be here, which at times is, is necessary to help us that. A bit brief. My first hearing was eighty-four Main Street in twenty-fourteen, and I was extremely nervous. Don, you really put me at ease, and you took the time to explain what was happening and helped keep everything in perspective, which generally consisted of me, you know, accosting you in the parking lot after the hearings and chewing on your ear, and you were very patient and kind and generous with your time, and over the last eight years, I've had a lot of questions and concerns about lots and lots of agenda items, and you've always welcomed my questions to the point of generosity. Would I, when I had questions about that, about why you were being so nice to me, you told me that I was adding to the transparency of the board's process and expanding understanding for others in town. And this is the same grace, kindness, and fairness I have seen firsthand. You extend to all members of all boards and committees, town employees, proponents, and town residents in general. What an exceptional and important example you have set for leadership in government, and you need more Dons. So thank you, and if you choose to run for selectmen, you can put a sign in my yard. That's great. Actually, they asked me in the eighties to, to run for selectmen, and at that time, there was no way. I, I could just, first of all, I wasn't interested, but being on the planning board, then was, the town was being developed, so what the planning board was doing was, was really approving things that could be there for centuries. So it really felt to me, there was more contribution to the town on the planning board at that time than any, any time that a selectman would be, you know, working for the town, so it was never a consideration, but now maybe it is.
It's multi-depth. So, Don, I just want to say from the, from day one when I started as well.
How many years ago, Andrew?
I think it's sixteen.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah. So, and, and I, I remember being down where Marty is at the end of the table, like nervous, and like, what am I doing here? Like you said the other night, like, I don't know what I'm doing, but the whole methodology of like going down from the other members and getting to be like, oh, I really learned from everyone's questions as, as I moved from chair to chair to chair. Further, as you face the audience to the left, which is really helpful, so the methodology you have for new members coming on, there was a method to the madness, it wasn't, but there was a method, which was great, and, and also I have to say you not be, or having an agenda, say, for the town, or so it's gonna come up. You really do have the, the best interests of the town at heart, you don't have an agenda that you're trying to do one thing or another, you're looking at the project for its worth, how it meets the zoning, and how, when we as a board interact with other departments or its select boards, whoever, the town council, really helped me over the years see how, how it all integrates, and we can move things much better for the town forward by united, really, and your vision on how to do that from over the years is tremendous, and look forward to whatever your next step is in serving the town, which I, I know you'll probably be doing something in some capacity, but that, that skill that you have is great, that I think really helped the planning board stay very productive and also out of the limelight in terms of issues and controversy, because how we could, your vision of how we could work with other departments and resolve issues before others even solve it. Again, you did it right. You did it, and thank you for all your service, I can't say enough, and echo everything everyone else already said. You're gonna be greatly missed, and glad that you still have that flip phone that we cannot call you on.
It wasn't that long ago, remember, I, I said, what's blue light? And I really didn't know what it was, and Andrew was very quick to tell the room and the public that my flip phone doesn't emit that spectrum of the light spectrum. So I thought that was more of a scientific answer than a, you're old, Don, and you don't know technology, but I have a regular phone. You know, Andrew, what you were saying there about learning how to, how to do things, and I think we all, because of the, the quality of the people, the, the hard work, dedication that, that you all are, you, we're all learning mostly how to do it right. But there were times when there was a great amount of learning from some members on how to do it not right. And sometimes that was struggle, but it also was a contrast that, where you could people that wanted to do it not by the rules, maybe would make themselves known, and those who wanted to do things by the rules and took the time to understand the rules were reinforcing the members And those who wanted to do things by the rules and took the time to understand the rules were reinforcing the members on the board that wanted to go in that direction. So as usual, Andrew, you nailed it. So with this item almost over, I need to thank all you guys, but the first one I have to thank is my wife. You know, I'd be on the phone with Karina, previous town planners, other planning board members over the years, and it was always, you know, is everything okay? What's up? And then I'd start to explain it, and then it would be like, I don't know what you're talking about. But is everything okay? So it's, yeah, yeah, you know. And then this is more of the sacrifice that my wife, daughter, and my son gave in supporting me was you know, there were fewer opportunities for long weekends. You know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take long weekends or even go on vacation sometimes, even though we wanted to, but sometimes there were things that I can't miss that meeting. And there was no Zoom, so that was that was part of the sacrifice. And then like tonight, you know, it's almost eleven o'clock, so you know, pulling the driveway, I mean, I used to kid her and the town planners at the time, that if I got home from a planning board meeting, you know, before eleven o'clock, my wife would call the cops because she'd think it would be, you know, burglar, you know, the whole world. But no, it's just tremendous support from my wife and my kids. My son was in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts over here, and I'd sometimes I'd ask my wife, you know, to bring him in and put him at the door to see me, see his father serving the town so that he could learn. And he did, and some nights, you know, it wasn't too much violence, he'd come over and he'd sit at my lap. And we would conduct some business with him sitting in on my lap. It was, that's pretty cool. I guess you can't do that now, but violates the public meeting. Then you know, the planning board members, the other town officials, and probably mostly is the public, that I should be grateful, most grateful for, you know, electing me, voting for me, and, you know, go downtown or the post office, over the dump, and, you know, people run into you. And for the most part, over the many years, it's been complimentary. And not just to me, but to the board. That made me feel great, that we were the most respected board in town, in the town's government. That wasn't always the case, but for the most, most of the time, I think it was, and I think it is right now. And that's important to all of us to to have that be important to us, that we do earn and keep the public's respect.
Just one other thing to to build on that is, I recall prior planning board members who have left, gone on to other roles in the town, and then having to come back to us for an issue or whatever and saying how much they missed the planning board and the the way things work on the planning board. So that's a true testament to how you run or ran the planning board and set up or help groom us along the way and have a balanced board, that we can disagree on items and still be really good friends and get along, and there's no disrespect or because of varying opinions. So great job of that, too.
Well, I, you know, I learned from Charlie Gaffney. He was chairman, and he, and before that, there were, you know, it was more every year we had a new chair. But once we came, once Charlie was the was the chairman, it was like, nobody's going to beat this. And so he was the chairman for over twenty-something years, and just it was I learned so much from him. Of course, that initial chair was Jim Denman. And one of gentlemen he was and the way he treated people with respect. I think that's, that's the way it should go. But when Charlie Gaffney didn't continue on the board, sometimes he'd come to the meetings, and I would call on him as Citizen Gaffney. So, which was my way of making sure that the public knew that I was in charge. And that he was, even though when he was in the room, he would be. So whoever the next chair is, if I show up, citizen marks.
Well, that's great.
Anything else? Beat that thing to death? We could. Thank you all so much. This is really spooky. I was walking in here tonight. It was like, actually, when I was walking into the town hall, it was like, it's kind of spooky to, you know, didn't want to think about it too much. But I grew up across the street. We used to play here. We used to play. Used to come in. Target, the town clerk. It was set up differently back then, much different. It's going to the police station, which was that closet downstairs. And it would be, the door would be open if you don't cop, if you only do one cop in town, the door would be open. There'd be the radios there, probably guns and everything. I don't know. Just walk around, look around. What are you boys doing? Nothing. Let's go. Spend a lot of time in the town. Yeah. So it'll be even spookier when I leave tonight, but we'll see. If there's nothing else, we can move on to the next item on the agenda. Planers' report, other business before the board. Planers' report. Karina. You're muted, Karina.
Oh, I guess that was pretty quick. There's a volunteer appreciation breakfast scheduled on May eighteenth from seven AM to eight thirty AM. I recommend that we try to all attend. And that is all I have for the planners' report this evening.
Okay, next item is approval of minutes, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Mega mushroom. We approve the minutes from April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Oh, yes. Billy and yes.
And then we have the minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So move second.
Motion's been made in second, and then discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Yes. Billy and yes.
And then we have, the next item is the executive session minutes, but I think we're still waiting for those the feedback from town council. Is that right, Karina?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll have, those will have to carry over to the next meeting. And the next meeting of the planning board is May twenty-third and June sixth. And if if it's okay, there's some administrative items that I think would help the board after we adjourn from this agenda. So if the board is willing to stick around for just a few minutes, we can go over some administrative items after we adjourn.
Sounds good. Motion to return.
Second. Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Try, yes. Billy and yes.
We return.